All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting on Tuesday evening, May 25th. And I'm going to review the agenda. To begin with, we'll have community input for those of you that are on the call remotely. You can just put on your video and raise your hand if you'd like to give input or go down to the chat and indicate it that way. And then we have a new member to welcome. Then following that, we'll do the officers for the Select Board for the coming year. Chief Sarr is going to join us to talk about the COVID testing and what happens after the federal funding ends and what we want to do. And then Ken Mostello, the Chair of the Board of Assessors, will be here to discuss the classification of the Assistant Assessor position. Madeline Blake, the Chair of the Planning Board, will join us to share their thinking about staff reorganization in a planner position. We are going to be formally accepting the master plan. It does not involve any discussion on our part, but as part of the process, we'll be accepting the master plan. I do have an update about Tim Bernuk, and I think this part of the agenda will be much shorter based on the update. We're going to follow up the discussion we had several weeks ago about regionalization, the sort of what are the next steps we want to consider? Just firming up a date for the Fall Town Meeting, the Town Administrator's Report, which has quite a number of items in it, so we'll use some of that time from Tim Bernuk, I'm sure there, with liaison reports. And then for the first time, we're going to try a consent agenda, sort of the way we've done it at the town meeting, where we've got some routine things, the approval of minutes and the warrant items that I've approved that were in the packet, and then appointments and resignations. And the same way we do that at town meeting, where if any one of us wants to pull out an item for discussion, we can do that, and if not, we'll adopt them under a consent agenda. And then the goal is to adjourn by 10:10. So with that, I would like to issue a very warm welcome to Travis Snell, who's a newly-elected member of the Select Board. And we're very much happy to have you as part of the board and look forward to working together. And it's exciting to be, you know, starting a new year with new energy and a fresh face, and we really appreciate you joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
But I'm going to go back now and ask if there is anyone on the call, because we don't have any guests in the room, any residents in the room. Is there anyone on the call that would like to offer community input? All right, well, hearing-
I would just like to build on, if I can, the welcome to Travis. It's very exciting to have you here. Thank you for your willingness to serve. I know you've already served, you've already served a lot to the town. And it's just really great having you here with us at this table.
You're here. Alrighty, so the next item on the agenda is the officers for the Select Board going forward for this year.
I have been giving some thought to this. I'm feeling a little anxious about the fact that we're in kind of in some form of transition. You know, we lost our TA, Tim, in April. We've been having an interim TA. We're still looking for a permanent TA. And I was thinking that inject some stability, that I might like to move to nominate a slate of the current officers to act as in their same positions for next year. So that would be Barney as Chair, David as Vice Chair, and Nathan as Clerk.
And so is that a motion you're putting on the floor?
Yeah, for discussion.
Is there a second?
Well, can we ask a question?
Yeah, then we have discussion. Once it's on the floor.
No, you didn't want to do- You can do it either way.
Typically, we'd have a second, and then there's discussion. Yeah, is that all right? Because the second just means it's open for discussion.
Well, sure, then I'll second that.
Okay.
But I do have some questions.
Sure, absolutely. So now there's discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So tell me about the history, because obviously I'm new to the Select Board. But tell me, you know, is this procedurally what customarily happens? And not only procedurally, but is there, you know, a history of having people serve in the Chair role multiple times? Or is it a progression? And is there anything that's established that we have in writing or in bylaws or anything else that would, you know, help us make that decision for someone new?
Yeah.
Those two things would be helpful.
Well, I'll, do you want to comment?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, which is why, yes, we do, and that's why I did the preamble that I did. We have a letter that the Select, at the time, Select Men wrote, I think like in 1987 or '97, something like that, in our policy book. And I'm, in fact, the one that's always been harping on, you know, that there's a lot of committees in town that have not been rotating their chairmanships, even though the Select Board has written a policy saying that they think they should, that chairmanship should rotate. However, having said that, I know my own experience, as when I was Chair, I had some initiatives that I would have liked to have seen get followed through on. And a year is not enough to do some of that. There's a learning curve, so it takes you a while to kind of get your feet wet and get people organized and, you know, with you. And there's time to set the goal and then time to move on with it. And if the next Chairman doesn't support that goal, it just gets dropped midway. And in fact, the reason I'm so familiar with the policy is because the policy was one of the things I wanted to upgrade, review and upgrade to reflect, you know, how we do business today. And to, we've been talking about certain things at the table recently about process. None of it's written down, so it's always kind of, sometimes it's a mystery. Sometimes it doesn't get followed, even though, you know, because there's no one place to go find that. So yeah. Yes, there is a policy, but that doesn't mean that it's it's not a it's not a part of the bylaw.
It's rare. So I think, you know, so I'm not aware of a policy that says that the Select Board has to change the Chair. We have asked all the other committees and boards to try to change the Chair every year. The standard, though, it does deviate from this, depending upon whether or not somebody wants to be the next, you know, move up or just timing for somebody. The standard is the Clerk becomes the Vice Chair, the Vice Chair becomes the Chair, the Chair becomes a regular member, and then you just kind of rotate through that. There's many more, I'm going to put this closer. There's, there are more exceptions to that flow than there are of a Chair continuing to be Chair year over year. The last time it happened was when Vanessa Maroni and I were elected in the same year, and John Gorecki was the Chair. He notified us that he was not going to run again after his term, which gave us two years with John, with the first him being Chair. And at that point, oddly enough, Vanessa and I were the senior-ranking people. And so we talked to John and asked him if he would be the Chair for one more year so that Vanessa and I, I think I was the Vice Chair and Vanessa was the Clerk, but we were under his mentoring, because after just one year with nobody else to help us, like nobody else having been in that role before, we were just, we were a little bit nervous about that, and he agreed to serve for a second year. There may have been a time before I started where, I'm not sure if Tim Holt ever did two consecutive years or not. I don't, I don't know prior to my joining. But since, since I joined nine years ago now, it's happened, it has happened once where the Chair was the Chair two years in a row. So I guess if I may, I mean, I think I chatted briefly with Barney about this. I think that nothing against Barney's Chairpersonship in this past year. I think it's very important to keep that change happening. I think that there are people who have the experience and can keep the things moving, but I want to just make kind of two points about it. One is that because there's a change in Chairperson does not mean that what everybody does and is interested in has to change, right? Because we are, we are all individually elected people to the Board with the things that we want to work on. And so if there are issues that Barney has been working on or that Dave Modell has been working on as the Chair and the Vice Chair, there's nothing in the bylaws that says they can't continue to do that, right? It doesn't, it's not like everything starts all over again, because the Chair has started. The Chair's role is primarily putting together the agenda, working with the team to set kind of the goals for the next year, and managing the meetings. And then they're there if there's an emergency. The Chair's the person that Brian would call if there's an emergency. He's never called me when I was Chair before, but, you know, that's the person. And then the Chair's responsibility is letting everybody else know what happened, right? They don't have any more authority than any other member of the Board. And so for that reason, I think that, you know, the idea of keeping the change and making sure that everybody has an opportunity to kind of go through that process and be a Chair at some point. I understand one year is short, but it's only three years for a term, right? And one of the reasons why that turnover is so that everybody who serves gets to understand what it's like to be the Vice Chair, and they get to understand what it's like to be the Chair. And having that process, I think, is important. Because over time, you get, you know, you get turnover, and you want people with experience in those roles. You don't want to have a situation like with Vanessa and I, where we were just like deer in a headlights. Oh, my God, how could we possibly be Chair? We've had no mentoring for this role. And so I think that for that reason, I think that the rotating is important. And I think that there are two people on the Board who have been Chair and been successful Chairs before. And so I would, I would I would propose that we not do that one, and I would make a different nomination. Okay, can I ask then? I mean, just curious, what do you think then? What would you want to see? I think what I would do is, not having spoken to anybody about this, is I would nominate Kate to be the Chair and me to move up from Clerk to Vice Chair. And I think that would make you then Clerk. Just because that's the typical process. I think, you know, that's what I would, that's what I would do. But
I just want to offer a couple of thoughts about sort of where we are in the sort of town's you know, life or history. And I do think, given the last year and the degree to which that I, as the Chair, had to be very involved in a lot of the day-to-day operations, I think that is going to continue until we, until we have a new Town Administrator onboard. But also, I think, getting that person well-oriented and helping them get off to a good start. I see that process as being quite an unusual situation for our town, because we've had, you know, a Town Administrator here for 13 years. And I think that the, while I appreciate, you know, Nathan's description of what the Chair does, my own experience and from what I can see going forward, given that we have an interim Town Administrator, who is wonderful, but he doesn't know, right, the town that well. And so that needs a lot of support. And then similarly, when we have a new Town Administrator onboard, I think the role of the Chair will continue to be much more hands-on than it will be, hopefully, once we have a new Town Administrator on who really sees this as a place that they're going to commit to for a period of time. And so I think that's the, that's the reason I would be very interested in continuing as Chair, because I think I've, I understand what the work is, I've done the work, and I can see, I can, you know, I have a pretty clear vision of that piece of the work, which is really internal, you know, a lot of it's internal staff work. And the other thing is, I would, I am not suggesting at all that we sort of break with, you know, the general policy that we've had and consider this to be something we would do regularly. But I do think the circumstances suggest that that might be an appropriate thing to do for this next year. And David, I don't know if you're still on the call and want to offer. Ah, perfect timing. I just did, because I just got off a plane, and I just figured, you know, be nicer, more careful. Yeah, I don't know, did you follow what we were, okay?
With eagerness. Okay, so first of all, having been on three major committees in my career here, and having been Chair of the other two and multiple-year Chairs in both of them, I personally am exactly the opposite of Nathan. I think there's a steep learning curve to the chairmanship of a big committee. And that you kind of have to go through one full cycle to understand it, and then you're more effective. So I'm absolutely a opponent of actually a two-year assignment. Now, I take Nathan's point about getting caught. And in five-member committees, you have to take that seriously. I don't think you have to codify it. I mean, for example, if either Kate or Nathan becomes Chair, that doesn't serve mentoring of Travis any different than if you stay Chair, right? Because he's the only guy we have to mentor. The rest of us are already prepared, right? So I don't see where that solution fixes the get-the-next-guy-ready problem, right? So, you know, Travis could do Clerk this year if he wants. There's no real thing to do as Clerk and be Vice Chair and then be in a position to be Chair. That's okay, you know, that follows the thing. And depending on future year elections, you kind of, if you have a reasonably-balanced five-member committee, you ought to be able to manage your succession. It's important. I don't want to downgrade in any way the importance of prepping the next group of members to be leaders of that committee. But everybody's in a three-year term, so everybody has three years to kind of, if everybody has three years, then it is incumbent on the leadership of the time to have a path forward for the new members. There are occasions where, because of timing and people quit, we had that school committee where somebody quit, and two people were rolling off, and, you know, three people were going to roll on, and Christine actually stepped in for one-year assignment. But that's pretty rare. And I don't think you need to make a rule about that. So I guess my feeling is pretty strong, actually. And I said it as soon as I got on this committee, that I thought one-and-done was not a good solution. That really, we ought to be grooming Chairs to serve two years. And, you know, most people, including yourself now, opt for multiple terms. Right? Again, and I think Alan did a fine job as Chair. But he was Chair, and then he rolled off. So whatever experience he gained, which was considerable in COVID, we lost anyway, because he didn't re-up. So from, you know, so from my point of view, multiple Chair, multiple years, not, not, what were you on? Like 17 years Chair of Planning Board or something like that, or of a Appeals Board?
Six years as Chair of the Board of Appeals. And so I do, but I think this conversation's helpful for me to understand-
My personal view is, a two-year chairmanship, especially if there's something going on, is entirely appropriate. Thank you for letting me speak.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, but-
Yeah, but I made a motion, and you didn't ask for a second, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what was your motion to nominate? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I guess, so technically, we have to deal with the first one before we deal with the second motion?
No, because if you vote in the first, then he doesn't get us. So how does that work?
So maybe, I mean, let's, let's make this a collegial, you know, conversation. Why don't we address your proposal? If that makes sense to you, why don't we go ahead and address that now?
How do you do that? Make a motion or?
No, I will-
Move the table, the other one to discuss?
No, I think that if, I think what's happened in the past is, because we've had this before, is there's two motions, and if it's, one isn't second, it is not second, and it's not. But if it is considered, then you just vote on each one. And you have a discussion about each, well, you have a discussion about each one, and then you-
Before you vote.
Vote on each, then you vote on each one. And one-
Okay.
They obviously can't both pass, my sentiments.
Right, right, okay. So your motion was to nominate Kate as the Chair. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And did you want to do that as a-
You did it as a slate, so I did it as Kate as Chair and me as Vice Chair, because that's the role I would be moving into.
Yeah.
And also trying to address the whole TA role and everything, and Kate's here during the day. And so I think it makes sense for Kate. She also has the experience as a Chair. And so that's why, I'm sorry, I didn't mention, just drop this on Kate.
I mean, it might have, you know, I might not have made this other motion.
And then Travis would be Clerk.
Well, unless he, unless he doesn't want it, I don't want to-
But that's true for Kate, too.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
If he didn't want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I hear from Kate, does she want to do it?
I know, it's out of the blue.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a little awkward. I mean, in certain respects, you know, I felt like I didn't have enough time in my first year, and this is going to be quite possibly my last year. And if I had another year, you know, to work as Chair, I might, you know, be anxious to do it. But, you know, as I said, I'm in somewhat of an awkward position. So I wouldn't say, you know, I wouldn't say no if the other motion were to be voted down.
So I just want to ask, how do we deal with this, I think, fundamental, I'm not going to say disagreement, but difference on the Board about, what I'm hearing is, we should go two-year terms, which I fundamentally disagree with. I think that, you know, you're on the Board for three years. And I think having that, I think that having the transition of the Chair is a good thing for the town, and it's a good thing for the Board, because it brings in new thought. It brings in, but, but we have to just remember that all the goal-setting is done jointly, right? All the performing of the goals is done jointly. And so, but, but so if, if the first motion passes and we're saying, we want to have, because what I was hearing Dave say was, we want to start doing two-year terms.
Yeah, but let me just interject there. I don't think that is, that wasn't part of the motion.
And I wasn't speaking for the committee, I was speaking for me.
Yeah, so that's a proposal, I think, if we want to take that up in the future as a Board, just as a, you know, as a change, we should do that. But I think tonight, the motion is simply, not simply, but it's that the, that's most that Kate made was to have the current group of officers continue for one more year. And that, and that's the sum of it.
Right, okay. And it's nothing against your Chairpersonship. I don't agree with that, because in this, it's setting a precedence where the only other time I've seen this happen is when there were people who were not ready to be Chair. And there's people in the room, I've been Chair two or three times, you've been Chair once. There are people in the room who could be Chair again. So I just worry about the precedence, not your being Chairperson.
No, I appreciate that.
I worry about the precedence that it's setting to do that, when we have other people who-
Absent, I mean, I know I'm arguing both sides of the case, but absent having changed the policy, and you're not, I guess I'm just trying to restate, and you're not seeing enough compelling reason to not honor the policy.
Right.
You're not, like, too many negatives. Can you rip the negatives and say that again?
Well, we do have a policy on our books to rotate. And it is actually for the Select Board. And the Select Board strongly suggests that all committees as well follow their lead in changing. And we discussed this policy a couple of years ago and decided not to change it. And, and I went, in my preamble, I was saying, I thought maybe this was the fact that we were having so much flux in staffing, that this might be a time to keep some stability in the Board, in the Board leadership as a counterbalance. And I think what I hear Nathan saying is, he doesn't think that's a compelling enough reason to go against our own policy.
When we have other people that, and also, there's nothing that says that Barney can't be the person that's working with the Town Administrator, help get them onboard, right? That's, we as a Board, you know, the Select, the Chair doesn't do everything, right? We as a Board assign people to do things.
But it is the case that the Chair and the Town Administrator work very closely together, much more so than, right, with other members, and so-
Yep, that's right.
Yeah. Well, I think unless somebody wants to offer a new comment, that we should go ahead and take a vote on the first motion, which is to approve a slate of Barney Arnold as Chair, David Modell as Vice Chair, and Nathan Brown as Clerk. So we can, we probably should do this as a vote, a roll-call vote rather than a voice vote. So let's see, the way we typically do this, Travis, is, you know, we do it in alphabetical order by last name. So, so I end up going first, and I will say Arnold, I.
We don't have Usколo anymore.
No.
Brown name.
With L.I.
Can I abstain?
Oh, no. You're not abstaining, you made the motion.
I know I made the motion, but not this before.
You want to withdraw the motion, then.
Can we pass me, and I vote last?
Sure.
I don't think that's fair.
I would prefer, it's not fair to me.
If you're having second thoughts about your motion, you should move to withdraw your-
Make a decision.
Kate, I think that's not fair to Travis.
Okay, well, I think I have to vote I then, because I made the motion.
You don't have to, if you don't, if you've, if-
You changed your mind.
If you found Nathan's arguments compelling, I believe it's better if you just simply put a new motion on to withdraw your old motion. We'll vote that, and then we can reopen it. I don't think you should just feel like forced.
Yeah, I, well, I'm-
We'll express our opinions, but if you change your mind, it's okay. It's better to do it now than later.
I totally agree. I do feel like I'm on the horns of a dilemma. And I think it's my fault. Well, it's, it's all your fault, Nathan. Well, and also, you know, if the votes had been then flipped the other way, Richard, and I would prefer, I think, see, what I'm trying to get is, I would like to have consensus for this vote. And so that's why I'm so bothered by my vote.
I'll tell you what, then I'll vote.
Okay.
I say I.
Then Kate, you're voting I?
I.
All right, so the motion carries.
Snell didn't vote yet.
Yes, he did.
No, I did, I said I. Very quiet.
Okay, well, given that that motion passed, then the second motion is not up for consideration, okay? Well, I hope we can move forward in a good spirit of, you know, all working together, and let's do that as we get into the next part of the agenda.
I'm going to, I would like to correct, I didn't have a good connection, but just for the record, you opened the meeting by saying it was May 25th. And you should say it's May 24th.
Excuse me. Yeah, so correct.
But I am going to just run out, and I'm feeling bashful now, get my mask, I'll be right back.
Oh, okay.
Especially because we're going to talk about COVID.
Okay, okay. Yeah. All right, so we, the next item is to discuss the extension of COVID testing. So just as background, you know, as you all know, we, our Fire Department has been doing an incredible job of providing- our fire department has been doing an incredible job of providing testing for um, residents and others uh, who would like to get a COVID test. And we have been doing that without charging and using federal funds to cover the cost of that, although the labor for that has been something that's been absorbed by the, no, has also been paid by federal funding. Okay. Good, thanks for the clarification. So Chief Sores is here with us and um, oh yeah, we have an extra, great, and turn that one on so you can be heard, great. So uh, we have in our packets um, some data from Chief Sores about the positivity rates and a lot of other numbers here, so um, if you wanted to just give us an overview of what you see happening now and then um, what your, and I know this is, who can, who can know for sure, but what you think may, you know, happen uh, going forward, and then the cost to, if, if the town were to pick this up, what the cost might be to the town uh, if we absorb the entire cost, or if we were to charge individuals that wanted to get a test for the cost of the test, uh, and the labor would still be covered by the town, sort of how that would play out, that'd be great, Brian.
So um, obviously, when we started, we didn't realize we'd be going quite this long. Um, you always think, oh, well, we're, the need for it, so the, the public health need has changed somewhat. Right now, a lot of it is, you know, you want to put your kids in, back in preschool and they require a COVID test to get back in, or a PCR test. Those places that require PCR tests. There's also, um, you know, okay, so we're, we're kind of done with that, but then prom happens, right? That was this week, right? All of a sudden, prom happens and then we get, we get people come. Uh, this Friday morning, we were gonna go test the sixth grade because they need to go, uh, they're, they're gonna go to their, whatever it is, science camp or whatever the go-away thing they do, and everybody needs to be tested, PCR test before they do that. So these things come up and we're like, oh, this is great, we can, we can offer this service. Right now, what we, the, the government is picking up the cost of a test, which is about forty-five dollars, and uh, the labor, which is pretty small. So we um, don't staff it, we, we condensed and we just, everybody lines up at four o'clock and we whip them through by four thirty and that's kind of what we're paying for. Uh, my, the, what the town is absorbing is my time and my EMS coordinator's time. Or the, the town's EMS coordinator, so that um, you know, we, we, we don't charge extra for, for that. It's, one of the things that's interesting about that is, the federal government would pay for a minute for, no problem at all for overtime. Because we don't pay overtime. Oh my gosh, she writes essays, I write essays about why this is, you know, whatever. To get it through, it's an interesting uh, thing. And of course, the rate we're paying is, anyway. Uh, it's a great deal for the federal government if they could realize it. Um, so, that's kind of, they got the cost range, so um, once, so the, the money will be up at the end, they extended it to the end of June. Once that is up, I think it would be a little bit hard for the town to pick up the cost of the test.
That's, I'm sorry, Brian, is fourteen a test?
We're forty-five.
Forty-five.
So we can easily be uh, forty-five hundred dollars a week.
Yeah, yeah, which we can't afford, and I think people can afford.
Uh, yeah, so the other kinds of things that we can really help with and makes it, we feel really good that we do is, there are, there are instances where, like against the sixth grade, but also small children. Nobody else does a reasonable job with small children. And so they bring them there and, you know, the kids, it's almost enjoyable to them, they, they, anyway, it's, it's a different experience than it is for pediatricians, which has been traumatic for some of these kids.
Yeah.
You know, and so it's nice to be able to do it. I think we probably should have the ability to do it, whether we charge or whatever. Um, also, you know, a dispatcher, a police officer, whatever, let's, let's get them tested and all, because we don't, and even within our, ourselves, um, which, you know, departments can pick up, because we don't want to be sending people that think they might have COVID, you know, and doing EMS work or whatever. So I think, you know, is it becoming more like the flu? Yes, but having this ability, as long as, as long as it exists, we probably should have some ability to do it. But whether it's free for the public, I probably don't see the town doing that from July.
We do have ARPA funds, um, however, you know, the way we're using our ARPA funds are, um, I, we said, uh, we decided to elect a hundred percent of the ARPA funds to be used as um, revenue replacement, and that can be spent on any governmental service, and this is clearly a governmental service. And on top of that, it also fits the criteria of ARPA funds. So I'm wondering if we don't charge for these, if the ARPA would, should be the one that takes up the forty-five dollar, or um, continue this, for the town to say, well, we'll provide the, the manpower, but if you want the test, you pay the forty, you know. But I don't know, that might cost you more aggravation for, for paperwork and
Right, so the thing that becomes aggravating uh, with paperwork, and we, we started out a little bit that way, is if you're charging the government for some and not for others, that's where it gets really messy. Um, otherwise, we would have to figure out, because we don't have a revolving fund and all that, so we have to, we might have to set up something.
Right, how do you pay for the cost, the cost while you're waiting for the ARPA funds?
Well, no, we're collecting forty-five dollars and that goes into the town's general fund.
Yeah.
And I'm having to pay bills that come in.
Oh, how do you draw on that?
How do I do that? So what I was having them do initially was put it into our ambulance fund, because that's where the medical receipts go. And I'm not sure that's okay. So we'll have to just, if we want to do that, I'm sure there's a way to do it and we'll have to sit down and make it figured out.
In that case, it's, yeah.
And, and it may just be that, that it's, you know, general fund and then somebody signs off.
It would be an ARPA fund, so it would not be general fund.
Not if you're collecting forty-five dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you're collecting, yes, sorry.
If you collect forty-five dollars, we'll just have to set up some way, make that work.
If ARPA fund determines they have enough money, just be cleaner is what you're saying, just.
Oh, sure, just like we're doing now.
Different pocket for this.
And then the only thing that becomes an issue is, right now with the federal government doing it, we do not make much effort to police, whether you're living in town or not. We kind of look at you funny if you don't, but really, we shouldn't be police policing that, because it's federal money that's, that's paying for it. Um, we would want to be a little more careful about that.
Yeah, yeah, the town recovering it, yeah. Any questions?
When did you say that we thought the federal government was gonna stop funding?
End of our fiscal year. Was easy way to say it, end of June.
Okay.
So it, it was supposed to stop earlier and that's why we had this conversation. I said, well, you know, the president last night said something about, and sure enough, they, they extended it through to.
So I know that um, Board of Health is receiving something like ten thousand uh, instant tests and they're planning on giving them out at Old Home Day and um, you know, they were saying that they didn't think, saw, they didn't see much need for PCR tests anymore because of where we are in that.
Because the antigen test got better or because?
No, they just don't think it's.
You know, I mean, there is, in terms of public health, you know, we're not sending people to hospitals all the time anymore.
It's not as significant if you're positive.
Yes, and, yeah.
But it's still the, excuse me, it's still the gold standard. And anyway, I mean, I don't want the science lesson here, but you know, if you have it, the antigen test is fine, right? But if you don't, if you want to be sure you don't have it, the antigen test is not fine, right? So when the kids are going to outdoor ed or prom or whatever, you need the negative sensitivity to be at PCR level, so I don't agree with that. But let me ask a question, Brian. The, this chart that's in our packet makes no sense to me at all, but can you just tell me like roughly how many tests per week you're getting nowadays?
Per week.
Yeah, or per month or whatever.
So per day, we're doing anywhere from five to twenty.
Okay, and so, and it's every day or it's, all right, so it's between?
Five days a week, I mean, six days a week.
Okay, so it's between thirty and a hundred and something. Okay, so.
So, so, uh, it's not uncommon for us to do a hundred a week.
A hundred a week?
We've done.
Okay, so a hundred a week, forty-five hundred a week, is times fifty, forty-five hundred, wow.
Yeah.
A thousand, that's quarter million dollars, like two hundred and something thousand dollars. That's a lot of.
That's a lot of ARPA money, yeah.
But you'd have to think of it for probably a year, right? Is ARPA, what would be the mechanism by which your committee would evaluate whether that was?
So what I, kind of, the last time we did this, I was saying that, you know, some of these places that are requiring PCR tests will probably start requiring antigen tests. And that has happened some, but not nearly as much as you would expect.
Mm-hmm.
So the hope would be that over the next few months, people start saying, you can come back to school if, you know, or, or whatever these things are. You know, it's, it's, it's when that's gonna be.
Well, I mean, my husband's currently in Scotland and in order to come back, he has to have, you know, a test to come back.
PCR test.
And he, he had to make an appointment um, where he's in St. Andrews um, to get a um, what is it called? Supervised antigen test. So you can do it, you know, um, because they're not good.
St. Andrews is pretty nice this time of year, he may decide it's not worth the hassle.
So am I reading this right, that like for the last four weeks, or in particular those?
We've had fifty percent.
We've had highest positivity rate that we've had
Yeah.
since last August. Seems to me like it's not time to let our guard down. I think we should continue it until you come back and you say, hey, we're low again. And I mean, on positivity rates.
So are there any other agencies that can fund this? I think that, or any um, consortia that you could join um, that, you know, might be doing this in other towns?
So the person to talk to about that would be, I mean, it would be um, Board of Health.
Yeah.
And they do have access to some of these things and part of that is, they, you know, they're, they're not sure if that's where you, you want to put your efforts. But if we, you know, we have the money, we're happy to continue to do it. We, you know, every time we think, you know, why are we doing this, there's, there's another compelling reason that shows up at the door.
The reason I'm asking is because one of the tenants for the ARPA committee is, don't use ARPA money if you can find other money instead, you know, so if there's state money or, you know, whatever, uh, use that first if possible, because that ARPA money is kind of precious.
So my, my thought would be, we, let's do a little more on the numbers and look at if, if we were to say we wanted to continue for six months, right, through December, um, what, and we, we're gonna use ARPA funds, and again, you have to make some assumptions, obviously, about how much testing, but what, what's the ballpark cost of that? At the same time, check in with the Board of Health and understand why they're not, why they, what is their current um, official policy about PCR testing and the need for it? And then I, and, and we should at the same time look at what, if we were to charge people the forty-five dollars for the test, what would that mean? Um, let's, let's see what those options are, and unless there's some reason that we need to decide tonight, I would suggest we pull those together and then at the June fourteenth, select board meeting, we make a decision.
Can I make three comments? In your three points. So I agree with that approach, I think we don't need to decide tonight, but um, so on the first point, the actual numbers, I guess you could refine it, but I think we have a pretty good sense. A hundred a week is probably a working, good working number and half a year is gonna be a hundred and twenty grand, a hundred and something grand, so. That's a piece of information for you to think about in that, yeah. So that's point one. Point two, and I, at least for now, I'm liaising with the Board of Health, so I'll certainly ask him that question. But I don't think it's their call, like.
No, 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 but I'd like your input.
If, you know, the airline says you need a PCR test, you need a PCR test, it doesn't matter what the Board of Health thinks. So I think the driver's not our Board of Health, but their input, okay.
Yeah.
And then the last point was, you said was, oh, about the funding, so, right. So if we were to decide, for example, that you should pay twenty bucks or twenty-five bucks, right, you know, a small number, but reasonable number, in, but it's a hundred percent of the people, not the partial that we're talking about earlier. Would that make the revolving fund math easier, the mechanics of it easier?
No, not necessarily. The other thing that may make it harder is getting the, getting, well, ARPA, we can kind of control.
Yeah.
But if you're going to the federal government and saying you want to be repunded, it's, it's hard to be.
But they're not going to refund you. So if it was ARPA that.
Yes, he has got to come to ARPA now, because he.
Right, okay, so, so it may be, you know, in that last instance, that you say it's twenty bucks, I'm just picking a number, right? It's a twenty-dollar charge, you have to be a resident. And, you know, that'll sort out some people and uh, it goes into a fifty-three year and a half or whatever it is, and you fund now fifty K. You know, maybe, that's an idea that you.
Yeah, so.
The other thing going, and you know, initially, we were saving people's lives, I think, by doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
So encouraging people to come, so that they knew they were at COVID, you know, and, and get them out of the stream and all that, you know, stop spread was really important. At this point, if we want to charge people and somebody, you know, it's, it's a great convenience and I think people are willing to spend something for that.
So our next ARPA meeting is the thirty-first at eleven? So it's, it's.
Thirteen hours to decide.
No, 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 it's the thirty-first, that gives you a week. Um, I'm just saying, if you could, you know, write up a little thing and send it to Scott. Um, and um, at least we could talk about it briefly then and get you go up and moving so that by the thirty-first, you maybe are done.
So I did, I had sent one to him before and I can revise that and send it.
Yeah, 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 it obviously would be revised, right?
I think we just keep it simple though, I mean, I don't know, like, do you have the means of collecting the funds and, I, I think um,
I think the problem with collecting funds, people will say, well, why don't you charge my insurance? And that's not something.
No, absolutely.
Right, so I mean, I think, I don't think we have to go for a, oh, do it for six months thing, I think we could say, Brian, do it for another month and let us know where it goes on, do it for another month and let us know how it's going, because hopefully it's gonna be dropping off.
So are you saying, do it charging or not charging?
Not charging, and using ARPA funds, not on a month-to-month basis, not saying we're gonna do it for the next six months. And just leave it to your judgment, working with Board of Health, when you should come back in and say, hey, you know, our numbers are back to where they were last August.
Yeah.
Which is surprising, but I guess it's, you know, we've got all these graduations and everything going on and masks are off, we have to expect it to go up.
Do, okay, can I ask you this? Do we want to set some sort of a budget so, so when I go to our committee, I say, and the selectmen are in favor of this and they, you know, are setting some sort of a budget of, you know, not to exceed or, is that, because it's, it's.
My thought would be what Brian estimates, because he's been living this for.
Okay, so, and the estimate is?
So it's, it's twenty-five hundred to forty-five hundred a, a week right now, and I'll, I'd have to sharpen the pencil to be more, more exact than that.
Okay, because this is the board that decides, not ARPA.
Right, it'll come back to us.
It's kind of one of these, you know, right, um, so um, but it would be helpful to ARPA to know.
Something in that range.
Twenty, twenty-five to forty-five.
So we say thirty-five hundred times fifty weeks.
And we're saying three months.
We're saying one by.
Six months happen, I mean.
Or one month, um, I don't know if one month is, I mean, I assume you could.
I think we should do more than one month.
You don't want to go.
We don't want to have to. But.
We're just gonna game.
Yeah, but on the other hand, you know, it, it would be good for ARPA to know a sort of an upper limit so that they know what's left over to, because we don't want to dispense more than, yeah. Hundred and seventy-five Ks.
You have to assume, I, I don't disagree with Nathan that month by month is not a, is a, it's not a bad way to do it. But when you're thinking strategically about ARPA, you should think of twelve months.
Yeah, but you would know what a month is and you would be saying, this may go until Brian tells us it's not going or until the board said stop.
But I, I wouldn't dismiss the twenty-dollar surcharge, just.
Yeah, some kind of charge, some kind of charge, yeah.
People are paying for convenience, we do.
And it isn't.
Go here, it takes five minutes.
And it isn't the life-threatening situation that it was when we first.
And it's below what, it's sort of at the nuisance level that people shouldn't be complaining that, go through my insurance. It's a twenty buck service charge, you don't even have to get out of your car. And, and you get the email in a day, right? I mean, what could be better? So I, I think, you know.
So I'll talk to Kelly about, yeah.
Yeah, financially, how that would play out. Who here on the board would like to be, uh, take the lead in sort of having something to come back to the meeting on the fourteenth with some options?
Okay, okay, she's the ARPA lady.
Okay, thanks. I don't, I don't want to once again throw something at you, Kate.
I'm the ARPA lady, you're right. Yeah, so, um, but you, it, it would be helpful if you can get some. Yeah, yeah. So, um, but you, it, it would be helpful if you can get something to Scott so that I can, and.
I'll talk to Board of Health, I'll give you.
And you'll talk to Board of Health. I, I already actually talked to them today, but, um, they didn't seem overly enthusiastic.
Well, I think it would be helpful to get something in writing from the board.
Right, exactly. Yeah, absolutely.
And I, I spoke to Linda.
Yeah, okay, so.
All right, so we're good with that? Uh, any closing questions or comments on this topic?
All right, thank you. We've done it before. It's been a great service. I mean, it's really, it's certainly been helped personally and, you know.
Yeah, and it's not just the stop the spread. I think for a lot of people, it's a, um, you know, eases their mind to know I can see, go see my mother this weekend or whatever it is, so.
I think it's also very calming to be able to just come to a place in Carlisle and get it done. They're always very nice. They don't poke your brain. And you get the result. I mean, I think there's so much good about what you guys are doing.
Yeah, oh yeah. Terrific. Thanks a lot, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we are, um, going to talk with Ken Mustello, the Chair of the Board of the Board of Assessors. And Brian is also here, our Town Assessor, um, our Town Chief Assessor. So, um, yes, well, or if you want to sit together, we. Yeah, microphone. You can both, yeah, sit up here in front of the microphone. Just bring up one more chair. Yeah, there you go. Thanks for joining us. And I know in our packet, everyone, we have the, um, proposed job description, uh, and we'll have, uh, and just give us a brief, uh, overview of that.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yes. So, um, we have over the last year or so, uh, uh, made a, uh, strong case for the need to, uh, upgrade the, uh, number two position in the Assessors Department, which in the, in, in the past has been an administrative assistant position. And we are now looking to make that an assistant assessor position. So one of the things, we, we, it is funded, uh, it's in the town budget, uh, we've, uh, you know, it's been discussed, uh, you know, certainly with town administration, uh, so it's, it's pretty well known that we were looking to do this. Uh, we are currently advertising for the position. Uh, the only step really left for us to do to, uh, clear the path to make this higher, other than find the person, uh, is to get the pay grade change, something that's commensurate with a professional level position, not an administrative position. So that grade is currently a five. We're looking to make it a seven. A seven puts us in alignment with the pay that's been budgeted, uh, with the FinCom and by town meeting. And, uh, and that really clears the path for us to go ahead and make this higher. So just, um, for anyone here who wants to know the background on this, uh, maybe for Travis's benefit, we, uh, we're doing this for four or five reasons. Uh, first of all, um, uh, we are looking to really reduce our outsourced field assessment, uh, which historically we've done with Patriot Properties. The, there's money to be saved there. It helps to, uh, pay the, uh, pay for this resource, but also because we're not terribly pleased with the job that they've done uh, on some of this. Uh, we'll, we'll use them if, if the need arises where we have an urgent need, but really we're looking to do as much of that in-house as possible. It also goes over back, uh, better with the taxpayers. Taxpayers like to have people that actually work for the town that they get to know and faces that they recognize rather than some outside contractor. But there are also some more compelling reasons. Um, we have a backlog of new growth that we need to be out assessing and we're behind. Uh, we are also behind on, uh, our cyclical compliance, uh, assessments, which are done on a ten-year rotation. Uh, the DOR has raised the issue with Brian. Brian, uh, and, and a lot of this dates back to, you know, a fairly prolonged illness that we had, obviously with, uh, Brian's predecessor on, on the, uh, in the department. Uh, but the DOR has kind of given us, uh, some added time to, to rectify that situation, knowing that we are in the process of replacing, uh, of hiring an assistant assessor who will have the resources to do so. So that's kind of important for us to be able to carry out the job and remain in compliance with the, uh, uh, Bureau of Local Services, which is very important. And, and I think one of the things here is we fully, it's our expectation that this is going to be largely, uh, self-funded because we're going to find additional new growth that frankly has been overlooked. And that'll help everybody. So we, we're already seeing it. Uh, and I think the last point I would make on, again, why we need to do this, it's risk mitigation. Uh, we came seriously close last year to, uh, missing our certification with Melissa's untimely passing. Uh, we had no backup. Uh, fortunately, we got a lot of support from the other folks in town here that work. Uh, the, the Bureau of Local Services was a big help, but we can't count on that. Uh, and I need to have the knowledge, the assurance that we've got some backup to Brian if he ever became indisposed for any reason or, uh, we need to have, uh, in-house, an in-house resource that could potentially pick that up. So those are the reasons. Now, I will say normally the protocol would be that we would go to the Personnel Board with this requested, uh, change. The Personnel Board, for all intents and purposes, is inactive. Uh, I think we all know that. Uh, so that's the reason why we're here tonight.
Can I ask you a few questions? Um, so, uh, what is the grade of the assessor position? Uh, Brian, I, I, I had asked you at one point, I don't know if you. Yeah, what is your grade?
You'll have to excuse me. I haven't had enough time to focus on that.
Okay.
It's higher than what we're looking for, that I'm sure, because I believe Melissa was up at around a ten or eleven.
Okay. And, uh, I understand it's budgeted, but what, what is the impact on the budget, um, from last year to this year for this being a seven?
Uh, there's going to be about a, we got a, I think a twenty-five thousand dollar increase.
Okay.
Uh, in our budget, specifically with the idea that we were going to make this higher.
And this is not an administrative, uh, obviously in the title and in the job description, it's, it isn't. But this is not an administrative position. This is an assistant assessor who will be going out and doing kind of sort of the same things as you, but only at, uh, that more junior level and and if you were ever to leave, this could be a succession plan type of thing.
That's exactly what happened. A woman who I trained that came in with no experience, um, to my department seven years ago in Stonem where I previously worked, was offered and took the position, you know, if they were. Oh, sure, excuse me. Someone with the right initiative and the willingness to learn, it takes time, but I was, you know, you can train somebody to, 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 to cover the functions that would have been necessary in order to have the town get an approved tax rate last November, when Melissa did pass away and the previous administrative assistant wasn't incapable of doing so. Um, that's, I came from a two-person office, I, uh, where I was previously. Through time and, and patience, I was able to, you know, to teach her all of the steps of the classification process and valuation. And then she has been hired as the, the Director of Assessment in Stonem where I came from. So I absolutely think that's capable.
And, but you're, but, but it's sounding like you're thinking that at this new grade, we'd actually be able to hire somebody who did have some skills already.
Well, I would say difference between seven years ago when I hired the woman that was working for me in Stonem. It's a very tight labor market with regards to people with these skills. Um, COVID really affected this profession. Um, there was a lot of older people. And what happens here is there's basically musical chairs. Those are, people retire, assistants, you know, move up to vacant, uh, head positions. You know, people in head positions shuffle around, but there has to be, you know, the, there has to be a fulfillment of the lower end positions such as this. And that's what I'm seeing now. There have been about seven different positions posted for looking for this type of, um, these types of skills. And there's a lack of them out there.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is the same thing is intact. There's nobody to hire.
Well, we, we have had people respond to the ads. We have not started interviewing. I won't say, I think Brian and I would agree that none of them are exactly ideal candidates, but they are definitely candidates we want to talk to.
Yeah, there's, there's nobody that's walking in with the, you know, with, with every, you know, type of experience you're looking for. There's very different experience that can be applied to this position. Um, I think the interview process is going to be incredibly important to determining, you know, motivation and personality and what they're willing to do and what, what they're, you know, their willingness to learn is really one of the more important characteristics. And I think that's where the interview is going to be key in determining that regardless of what.
Mm hmm. I really worry about what this is going to do with other departments, but I think we dodged a bullet last year and I think we should do this. My opinion.
I do think, as I stated, I do think that within two or three years with the right candidate, you could be looking to see, um, I'm not sure who gave the classification hearings, um, previously. But I, I would like that person to be involved in that process. You know, after they've had a chance to go through the full year cycle and have them participate so they're getting that experience and the understanding. So that if you do run into that emergency situation that Carlisle found itself in last year, that this person would be capable of, of at least getting you through that process. And then, um, seeking the, the help or outside resources looking towards the, the next fiscal year. That's really like the last hurdle. Where you have some time and the last deadline, so to speak. You have time when the banking season starts, after, after the actual till, uh, actual tax bills are issued. Uh, you have time before the, the, either myself or that position be out in the field doing inspections. It's really that end of the, uh, the beginning of September and end of November window, which is really important. You have to get values approved, the tax rate set and the tax bills out. It's really a tight window and it is.
And I will just add to that, one of the things I'm really looking to do is free up some of Brian's time in that period so we actually can get some, uh, some meaningful management data on assessment revisions on interim adjustments, which has been sorely lacking in the past. Uh, it's been one of these things in the past where we get handed, uh, interim assessment adjustments. And it's like, well, I need your approval on this today, board. Okay, how did we come up with these numbers? Well, you know, Patriot did this. They didn't really tell us. Okay. And meanwhile, we have to defend this to the taxpayers.
Right.
Okay. So we're looking to change that mode of operation. I'm looking for something that's a little more substantive that we can actually defend if we're asked about it.
Yeah, and so what I'm hearing, which I think makes a lot of sense, is that, you know, you want a department where you have a, a number two that could step in over time, right? But can also, right, make it possible for the chief.
At the same time, you see potential for increased, you know, revenue generation as well as cost savings.
Yeah.
You know, at the same time.
But the, uh, you know, eliminating that risk, uh, that we ran into last year is a big part of this.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, I, I lost a board member this year. I, I, you know, she didn't, and unfortunately, and she was spending probably most of her free time, uh, here in Town Hall during the fall months, trying to keep things going.
Yeah.
And I think it eventually became a little too much for her. Uh, but, uh, you know, I can't promise that again.
Right. All right, any other comments or questions?
Uh, given the tight labor market and the shortage of qualified candidates, is there a possibility we have to upgrade the position more to attract somebody? Because you don't know until you try, right?
I, exactly. I would, I would assume that you need to, you still need to be able to check that out.
We do have applicants, Dave.
Yeah, okay.
So let's try.
And we do have a note in the packet from Steve Ladue, who's recommending the grade position at grade seven. Um, so there is a motion in our packet. Would, um, one of you like to move the motion? It's on page seven.
I'm, uh.
It is covered.
I move to approve the recommendation of the interim Town Administrator, Steve Ladue, in his role as Acting Personnel Administrator, to grade the Assistant Assessor position to grade level seven to create more room for growth for the position.
Second. Any additional discussion? All right, we can do this by, uh, voice vote, I believe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excellent.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate your help.
Yeah, thank you very much for what you're doing. Um, it's, I, I can tell you're really going to bring our, um, great improvements to our, uh, assessors department.
Yeah, my house has already had its ten-year, um, uh, re- reveal.
Unfortunately, there aren't, aren't enough.
The last.
All right, thank you very much, Brian. Thank you, Ken. All right, well, let's move on then to, um, the discussion of the, of the Planning Board, uh, Staff Reorganization. And Madeline Blake's here, the Chair, Co-Chair of the Planning Board. Thank you, Madeline.
Peter Yao. We're, um, we're doing our elections on June thirteenth, so we're still on our prior year's, um, officers.
And in your packet, you have, um, I believe we have something from you, don't we?
Yes.
About the job description. Yeah. So some of you have that up. What page is that on? So I can.
Oh, see, I always do, do mine separately, so it's just.
All right, that's okay. I'll get there. And I know Madeline's going to give us an open.
You could download those.
Page thirteen of sixty-eight.
In both ways.
Yeah, here it is. Okay.
So I'm here on behalf of the Planning Board requesting to go ahead and fill the open position that we've had now vacant for almost a year. George Mansfield, our prior long-term planning administrator, retired on June eleventh of last year. And we've been working with John, I think you all know this, John Mativieh, as the interim planning administrator. Um, so what we're requesting to do is to fill this position with a planner rather than a planning administrator. So it's a different position. Some of the jo- the duties will be the same, but most of it we're anticipating would be functions that we're not covering now or that we've covered only sporadically. Um, we're also recommending, George was working twenty-five hours a week, so he was part-time, and we would like to fill this position with a full-time planner. I can go into what, you know, what we anticipate Phil do. They, they, they will report to the Planning Board. This will be our employee, but we really envision that it's someone that would work with a lot of different groups in town. They would work on pro- on projects that we do jointly with other boards. I, I thought about how, you know, how are we going to decide if there's a lot of people competing for their time, but they'll be assigned. And I think it would make sense to start with the, the Select Board and the Planning Board setting goals and each year seeing what flows from that and selecting projects. I would anticipate that, or hope that this person would be generating and suggesting their own projects, that they'll do a much more robust participation in regional planning, mass planners continuing ads so that they can keep up with trends. They'll come back to us and say, this is what other towns are doing. This is what's going on. In the Planning Board, we have quite a list of things that we haven't been able to get to from going over the zoning bylaw, rewriting our fire rules, assessing, um, whether our assumptions about rainfall and our regulations are appropriate for climate change. There's a number of projects in the master plan, which would certainly come into the mix. Um, and a, a big focus of this, we, we want someone who is very technically literate. We've just managed to, to start initiating, having GIS, we've purchased a perpetual license that, um, Ryan McDonald, who was just here with John Mativieh, have started that, but we want someone with strong skills in that area and who will continue. We've started scanning and moving to, to all electronic documents and we would also like to, to implement electronic permitting. So someone who's got the technology skills. To, to continue that. Um, and, and I think it's important, I think it, it would, we would be well-served by having a person that is a repository of knowledge about our town, particularly about our land use and development patterns, so that that information can be disseminated to people that are working on different initiatives or different plans. And we have that detailed information about what our history has been, why it's been like that, and what is and isn't possible for us. And GIS is certainly part of that, but I think it's broader. And I, I guess I should mention that I am not as organized as the assessing department because we are somewhat not as well lined up with the budget cycle. We, we, we were not, we, we drafted this position description last fall. We purposely waited and held it because we wanted to receive input from both the master plan and the Governance Committee. Um, so we're going forward now, but we missed the chance. the chance to get approval for the position when the budget meetings were going on last fall. We, our budget was supplemented by fifteen thousand dollars, but I don't think that's going to be enough. I think we're going to have to find some more money. Um, and I'm, I'm hopeful that that's possible and we don't have to wait a year.
So you have the, um, the funds that were used to pay George part-time and then an additional fifteen, but you've determined that you're going to have to offer a higher salary to attract.
What's, what's the gap there including health benefits?
What we have is, I don't know the answer on health benefits. I'd have to get the information. George had that. So, um, we, what we have is seventy-four thousand and something. And the range that Steve suggested for the position starts at eighty-nine. So it's another fifteen.
Top of the fifteen that rolled in.
Yes.
So FinCom did roll in the, like, FinCom basically allocated.
Added an extra fifteen. Yeah.
And I do want to say, I, I mean, I think you guys see this, but it, it is asking to spend this extra thirty thousand dollars, but it's getting a lot of new functions.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No, I mean, there's, there are two different.
Yeah.
It's only actually an extra fifteen thousand, right?
Well, from what, what we were paying George.
But, but what we would be asking.
You're saying FinCom already to Nathan's point. FinCom tossed in the extra fifteen already.
They did, yeah.
We have about a fifteen thousand dollars, or if you could get them at eighty-nine.
Right.
Get them at eighty-nine.
And it probably, I doubt we're going to be ready right on July first, so it'll be somewhat of a prorated year. Um, I, I really think it would be great if the, hopefully it wouldn't be too much of a delay, but if the new town administrator could come first and could participate in this hiring so that they can develop.
Exactly what I was going to say.
Relationship.
Right.
You know, from the get-go with this person.
I, I really am hoping for a real good leadership team that would be working together, that, that they would get along together. So rather than this, you know, this one being hired over there, this one hired over here. Uh, so if you could at all wait and just one more month, you know, till we get ours in and then you get yours. Um, I, I think that would be ideal.
But, but you made a comment that the planner would report to the planning board.
Yes.
Oh. And does Gretchen also report to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay. So we still have to net out that issue, right? About reporting, quote unquote, to boards rather than getting direction and guidance from boards, but reporting to the TA and having them work. Cause that, that is an impediment to the, what we're trying to accomplish in terms of a cohesive working team that's.
Well, that's, that's covered here under supervision received and given employees under the administrative direction of the town administrator, administrator and the policy direction of the planning board. So I think that's covered.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then, right. So then I, I agree with that part. I'm just saying that co-chair here herself is saying we'll report to. We have to work to, we have to begin to disassociate that mentality of the health agent reports to the health board and the planner report. Because when they go inside town hall, we don't want to recreate those silos that have been there. We have an opportunity
Right.
to undo that. So I'm asking.
I do believe that, I do believe that, because I didn't even read the whole thing. It, uh, consults with the town administrator and/or the planning board where clarification, interpretation or exception to municipal policy may be required. So I think that's really been, that idea is, is baked into this job description that it's not solely to the planning board, but there, there is some answerability to the town administrator and the town administrator in our, uh, personnel policies is the chief evaluator in conjunction with the chair of the various boards to, to, to ensure, because very often the nighttime government is not in as good a position to evaluate some of the day-to-day work that the staff do. So I think we're trying to continue to build that and foster that idea. Um, it's not a man, yeah.
But we should, but then there should be something mentioned in.
Can I just, can I respond to that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I believe that legally, because we're the appointing authority, we are the supervisor. And because this person is going to carry out jobs, you know, some of their tasks are supporting our board. I don't think we have a lot of choice on that. And I, I, I have had over the past year occasion to think about what it's like to supervise a person in this situation. And I have it clear in, in my head. And if you, if you're the supervisor, if you're the appointing authority with the authority to hire and fire, I mean, that's where the buck stops. It just is.
Yeah, but you've been part of our process, maybe. I mean, I would want to talk to Mr. Harrington about what you just said, but, and I'm not debating it. I don't have any knowledge and you're a lawyer and I'm not, but, um, but I'm married to one and I'm the son of one. I, my lawyer wife accuses me of being more of a lawyer because I, well, I may be. Um, the, so the question, the, the dilemma that I wrestle with and you were part of our process to try to make the land use with is not to question that. And the health department would say the same thing, right? But inside the town hall, when there needs to be flexibility, cooperation, that, if that is in fact the legal underpinning, it, it lends itself to silo. It, it, it creates fertile ground to create silos. And we are living and we have lived silo life and it hasn't been that great. And it's been inefficient as a town. It's led to inefficiency. It's led to tension. It's led to having to hire little bits of pieces of people because they're only in this department. We can't hire one person that does like sixteen. You know, there's a lot of things that I think we need as a select board to address in this time that we're looking at things. So I, I certainly support the position. I absolutely support the position. And I support finding the money. I'm just saying, and we have a little bit of time because we have to get the TA in and stuff, is we should try to think really hard about how we frame that whole thing so that the guidance comes from the board, but the rate, the day-to-day tasking and the teaming is not like the board's responsible.
Well, I, I will say that we, the whole planning board is on board with this, that we envision this as an outward facing position. We, we're proud of the fact that we've, well, partly the application work has just gone down, but we've achieved efficiencies that created time.
Yeah.
And, and this role is going to be something different that we haven't done. So we're envisioning it that it would work with other groups. But if you had, the housing group wanted them to do a project and the sustainability wanted them at the same time, someone's going to have to help them, especially when the person's new, you know, set the priorities.
Yeah. But that's where I think the TA helps.
Yes.
See, and that's why I could like, would like them to also be a team so that, that the planner knows he can go to the TA to get relief from these other turkeys who are asking him to do this. It doesn't, and that, because when it happens, you might not be a, you know, might not have a meeting scheduled or, you know, whatever.
I would be delighted if, if that, if that could happen off of you.
Right. Because you should not be managing staff. I mean, that should not be a part of your job description. And that's what we're trying to, when, we're not trying to get, seize control of your, of your, your agenda or any of that. We're just trying to help support the staff and make you, to ensure that the functions, the town hall functions all get satisfied that have not been satisfied for quite a while now. So that's, we're, we're trying to balance that.
Any other comments or questions?
I think that's a good, good point about balancing. And I've been on the zoning board deals for a long time. So I know that this position, this has been talked about, or at least, you know, discussed informally for quite a while as to how to best serve the town with the planning type position. So it's not out of the blue. But I would ask about the cost again, what that differential is, what we think, because, you know, this hasn't been kind of put forward to the FinCom and, and isn't in the budget. And so, and I guess because I'm brand new at this, I, I just was curious, you know, where does that additional money come from? Is that from a fund that we have or, or how does that mechanically work?
We would say, okay, and then FinCom would find the money.
I will say that the planning board is going to have a large turn back this year because we didn't pay the second salary. So maybe they could just take what we saved and.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm just, I, you know, I think, you know, and we haven't adopted or accepted the master plan yet, but all these things are components of the master plan, not only how we're going to de-silo the, you know, town or aspects of it, but also the financial implications of everything we do. And so we're going to have to balance those things. So that's why I'm asking and just wanted to understand that process.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I have to say, this was something that was started more or less independently of the master plan because, uh, David and I, what was it, two years ago now? And, um, Madeline and the, the chair of the cons comm and the chair of the board of health, we had what we called small meetings, uh, every Friday for almost a year. And talking about how to better, you know, have better organization and supervision of the building departments and how they could work more closely together and maybe have, since there are functions that go across the different silos, take, uh, instead of having a, an assistant in each, in each silo, have somebody, you know, do cross, more cross-training and things like that. So this is, this is all of a piece of hopefully reorganizing some of this.
I just, I want to refer back to the note from Steve Ladue that, um, makes clear that it, um, looks like this would be a grade nine, uh, which is where the planning administrator position is currently classified. So the salary would be eighty-nine thousand, seven sixty-seven to ninety-five thousand, forty-four. And the planning administrator position would be eliminated, you know, the one that George Mansfield held up to, through last summer.
But it sounds like, uh, is grade nine going to be enough? I mean, for, because this is a different, if the, because this is not an administrator position, which was ticking off the boxes. This is a little more.
So before we ask that, there's a question I had, Madeline. So did you guys outsource the quote-unquote planning function then? George or?
It just didn't happen.
Well, in the interim, but I mean, when George was here and he's not a planner.
Planning?
Yeah.
No.
We just didn't do planning.
What?
We just didn't do, I wasn't here. I don't think we did that much planning. But David Friedman was the chair. He was, he could do it himself and he, and he and George did carry out a number of projects.
So they acted as a defect.
Yeah, but it was.
We don't have like an outsourced service that we were using.
No.
In that era. We just didn't have the, quite the total skill level that you're asking.
We had David Friedman. He was moving out of town.
I'm just looking at something. You know, and I came across this report that they did, that they cataloged all the roads in town, which ones are private. And George and David did that. And I asked Gretchen and I'd never seen it and it's this great report. I wish we had given it to the master plan.
They're when they did that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So I, 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 I support this, um, role. I think that it's important that, you know, we've been lucky to have really, really good staff. And I think it's important as we have turnover that we're, we're filling the roles with as good a staff or better staff. And, um, you know, I think that, you know, we as the volunteers on the board are, are managing some of the departments. And that was the big eye-opener for me was, you know, when I was on a board, I said, we manage people. Um, and, but, but I think that, you know, we, we, we shouldn't be managing and micromanaging the details of what we're doing. We're just there helping like remove barriers and everything. And so we need to make sure that we're hiring people that can really do this. The only thing I would ask is, uh, a little bit to what Travis was just asking, uh, is, I, it would be great since we just went through the budget process of just letting FinCom know and getting, getting their feedback a little bit because we just went through the process. I'd hate to just now just say we're going to prove another position, um, without giving them the heads up.
Well, my, one of my questions was going to be what my next steps are because I haven't done this. So I had anticipated that if you guys were on board with this, then I would ask to meet with them. And I have been working with Lanning, keeping her updated on what I'm doing and, you know, even over the last year. They know it's, it's coming. They don't know that we're going to need fifteen thousand more dollars.
Yeah. I mean, hopefully you'll be able to go there and say, hey, the select board approves this. Um, you know, can you find the money? Um, yeah. And, and get their, get their feedback. So we're not just doing it. Because sometimes we really do just say, okay, and then they have to go find the money.
This is acknowledging the income.
And so just, you know, I think asking them.
Yeah. I, I don't think this is going to come as any surprise to FinCom. I think.
No, I know it won't.
They have seen it coming.
I'd seen it coming too, and that's why I think, but I think it's good that we, you know, because then any board can come before us and say, oh, well, we need this. We need, and, and I just think we need to have a kind of a process or a thoughtful way of going about this so that not everyone's, you know, knocking at the door. We can help them.
I, I would say this, this was has quite a, had been quite a process and it wasn't the planning boards coming to us and say, we need this. This was us talking to them and asking them, what do you, you know, how can we do this better? And, and they did wonderful work and did do a very thoughtful, um, job, I think, of coming with this plan.
It was super helpful to have the master plan input too.
Well, that's.
We didn't take everything verbatim, but it was the hugely influential on having that being viewed as a need.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, it was great that you did that. Yeah.
So do you, uh, so do we have a motion in here to, um?
No, just as discussion.
Yeah. So, um.
I think it's just a sense of the board is what.
Yeah. So the sense of the board is that we support the position and that we would like you to meet with the finance committee and go through the same discussion and explain where the, the, what you think the, um, financial impact will be and the need to get their input on how you might address the difference.
And then I come back for a final approval to you. So I would come back again.
Yeah. Or just give it to whoever the TA is then as a, hey, can you approve this and meet up with them.
But I would also ask that you do involve the TA, um, integrally in, in your search and, you know, interview process and all that. Those are people that they're going to have to work closely together and lead together.
Well, I was hoping that they'll come in time that we could do similar to the screening committee that you guys set up for the town administrator. We could have a more smaller modified version that would be the town administrator. Um, and I, I guess I shouldn't call anyone out, but I, I do have a planning board member with planning experience and an interim planning administrator that is a good idea.
Yeah.
If, if they're willing, but to have a small committee like that, including the TA.
Yeah, which would be good. And hopefully we, the timing will work out with the TA position.
Let them to come in, in.
Well, we're, we're, we're going to talk later on the agenda about the, we're, that we're going to do the, um, interviews of the three finalists that the board hasn't heard about yet, but, um, June twenty-fourth, I think the date is, so it's not for a while. And then we'll, we'll, we'll make a selection, we hope, but then there'll be that process of working out a contract, but also them, if they are in a current position, giving notice and, right? So it could take a little longer. But I think if you wanted to move, if it didn't, you know, maybe some of the preliminary steps you could do with Steve Ladue as the interim, right?
Yeah.
So.
I, I would really like to, it may be optimistic, but to get someone around September first because John is going to stop working with us June thirtieth.
Uh-huh.
So that's already a two-month gap.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's something that would be doable.
Yeah. Good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Madeline.
We don't do a master planning thing today.
Yeah, we're just accepting the master plan. Yeah.
So we don't need to have.
I mean, Madeline can stay if she'd like to because it's very exciting, but.
Motion right now if you want.
Yeah.
I move that the select board vote to accept the twenty-twenty-two Carlisle Master Plan is presented by the planning board on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Second. Second from David Modell.
And the presentation is the link in here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the final.
And it's online, you know, it's on the carlisle.gov, um, thing as, yeah.
And this is the.
And I'm so glad we're not on that committee anymore.
You're going to jump on the implementation.
The hard-working members of the master plan steering committee. Thank you, Christina. Yeah. So if, um, unless, I will say that the discussion about implementation and responsibilities, I mean, all of that's going to come at a future select board meeting where we are going to involve the planning board and kind of do some of that jointly. Um, so if there's no discussion about accepting the plan, I'd like to go ahead and take a roll call vote. You good to do that?
Roll call?
I mean, sorry, uh, sorry, a voice vote. So all those in favor of accepting the twenty-twenty-two Carlisle Master Plan is presented by the planning board on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. It passes unanimously. Thank you.
Time is it?
Eight-thirty. All right. So let me tell you about what's going on with Timbernook. There's lots of late-breaking news here. Um, and, uh, in the packet, um, let me just get to that section. You'll see some.
There was nothing in the.
Yeah, there were some memos from Tony and the board of health about Timbernook, et cetera. I'm, I'm not going to try to go back and, and go through all the details of the last four weeks. Um, you know, I thought tonight we might be actually, um, taking a vote on a proposal about the camp that they have planned to continue on the Conant land. However, um, this afternoon, I had a conversation with Sherri Kennan, who's the director of the Timbernook program. And she told me that just this afternoon, they had signed a contract with the town of Sudbury for a site there that they are going to move ahead on having the camp there this summer. Yes. So the, they will, so the question about whether or not that camp might happen here in Carlisle this summer is a moot conversation now. And they will finish their current preschool, after-school program activities that are scheduled to run, I think, uh, two weeks or ma- or maybe the end of next week is when they're over. And then we will... We being... I would... I'm going to propose that the town administrator be the point person for making sure that their cleanup and not just they remove all of their equipment, but also that there is an effort made to really, as much as possible, return the area to, you know, a more natural state. That that will happen the week following so that by mid-June, and we can pin down the days more precisely, but everything should be out of there and it should be back to as natural a state as they can make it with follow-up from... With oversight by the town to make sure that happens. So that is the conclusion. Gone a fairly long series of discussions and difficulties, but I think it's a good resolution. It means that the families that had signed up, their children to have a summer camp experience in this program, they will be able to do that. It'll just be at a different location. That does include some Carlisle families, not a large number, but... And it also means they have a permanent site going forward. And it means our town, we've done our bit to support their program. And we will... We've learned a lot about how we might, if we were approached to do something like this in the future, a better way to do it. So comments or questions?
No, I think that's a great outcome. But I see... I've been in business long enough to know that sometimes these things don't always work out. And so hopefully, the town will accept that, the other town that they're dealing with, and moves forward. And if not, I guess we'll come back to us again.
Well, but we will be prepared next time. We're really smart. We, you know, we do make mistakes, but we try not to make them more than once.
Make different mistakes.
We make different mistakes.
But Barney, if, for example, like if you're renting, right, and then your lease is up, there's usually a walkthrough and there's some kind of sign-off.
Right, final, right.
And there's usually a deposit or some financial lever to say, "If we disagree, we're going to withhold that," right? So we don't really have that here. So I guess my question... I mean, we should be... Because then we have people here who like to walk in the woods. I don't know how much of a leverage we have, other than good faith. And at the end of the day, if there's something that needs to be remediated, can we just commit town staff, like BPW staff or... Who would be ones to go in there and really...
If something needs to be done.
You know, impose the citizens.
Yeah. At first, I would say that, having dealt with Sherri Kennon quite a bit over the last six weeks, that she wants to leave the town...
She doesn't want to bring her bridges.
In having a good relationship, right, between Tim Bernuk and Carlisle. And I have discussed with her in a different context, but when we... They were originally thinking we might move them to a different site, how this site would be left and that we would have a site visit to review what they have or haven't done, be able to set up a list of things we wanted them to do and that they would agree to do that. And she's open to that. She said, "Yes, we would be happy to do that." So if there are more... If there are larger, you know, things that need to be done that require, you know, heavier machinery or something, I don't know what that would be, but...
It's only heavy machinery, but she's just like two people.
Well, no, she's got a staff. But nevertheless, yeah, if there's something that they can't do, not sure what it would be. We would, yes, we would have to figure out some town resources to put in that. But I don't think it's going to be a lot. Fortunately, land does return, right? Now, once we get off it and let it recover, so that would be good. And John and Annette, thanks for joining us. I don't know if you saw my email earlier this afternoon. Okay, good. Good, and we thank you for your stewardship of the land.
Yeah.
All right, good.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Yep. All right, so let's move on to the... Following up our discussion about regionalization, which I know Travis, you joined us for on Zoom last meeting. So that's good, you were here for that conversation.
I was here in present.
That's right.
Right here.
Well, exactly. So this is a brief conversation, but we... It seems to me it's important for us to figure out, okay... If you recall the conversation we had, which I thought was very thoughtful and wide-ranging, one of the ideas that came up was, "Did we want to consider an outside firm that might help us with some of that..." I think it was you, Nathan, that described, you know, sort of the analysis, looking at various municipal services so that we could understand what services that we currently provide or might like to provide, that we provide as a municipality in its own. What are other towns doing? What are the possibilities? And also, what are the kind of cost benefits, if there are any? Or more... And also, the improvements to services that might come from some kind of sharing of resources? So there... And there may be some other things that others of you have thought about, but I think this conversation for tonight is to see if we are in agreement about a next step to sort of move forward in the conversation.
My preference on the next step... Sorry, I'm always going first. But my preference on a next step would be to wait for our new town administrator, who would help shepherd us through this, and also wait until after we have gone through the review of last year's goals and our goals for this year, just to make... To understand where it's going to fit within those goals before tackling something, you know, like saying, "We're going to kick this off now." I think without the full-time town administrator, I don't think we're going to get very far. And without understanding where this sits on the priorities for our goals for next year and how we did last year, I think it would be hard to... I think this should be part of our goals discussion.
I think that's well said.
Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly think having a TA on board would be good. And they may bring some other ideas and insights and relationships and everything else that, you know, we could draw on. No use, you know, like going to the Collins Center, for instance, and starting something up and that we find the new guy, you know, has something much better in his hip pocket, so...
Yeah. So how do you think we should... Or is there any... And maybe, Nathan, you are sort of more up to date than I am about the Public Safety Facilities Task Force. With, you know, when we discussed as a board, you know, we discussed this at our last meeting, we were not, you know, we didn't want to give any direction to that group to be doing any of this. But obviously, some of what they're looking at would be effective if there was a... Some effort at some kind of sharing of services or regionalization. And I don't know how far along they are in their process, but I wouldn't want to have them, you know, go really far in one direction and then we start a process about looking at regionalization and decide we want to pull back. Do you have any sense of...
I think what we were talking about with them last time, I think, you know, there were three areas that came up as regionalization. I think, you know, there was totally regionalized the police department and in all of our discussions about that, it was going to be a precinct. We were still going to need a building here, you know, you need the proximity. There was totally regionalizing the fire department. I think that would be incredibly cost ineffective, but that's just my own editorial. But we would still need a fire department, you know, a building here. And I guess what might change there is maybe, you know... But I don't know, maybe they would already consider when designing something that maybe there's people staying there because it's full-time. I'm not sure that, you know... And then the more likely one was dispatch, which was... Which is a very small room. And what we talked about was, "Well, build the building with a really small room and make it a conference room for now. And if we ever get out of regionalization, we would still be able to use it." So I'm not, you know, maybe being naive, but I'm not sure that a lot of what they're thinking about now would change that much.
Right.
I don't know that it would change that much. I think it's who's managing it and who's staffing it would change. But I can't imagine that if we regionalized the fire department, there wouldn't be a fire station here somewhere towards the center of town. And the same thing with the police. I think even if we're regionalizing, I think that people, you know... I just want to point out again, we failed to regionalize, I think it was the animal control officer. You know, so, you know, I think it's a steep hill to regionalize things. But I think that there's going to be a desire to have it, like, be the same people that are serving the town and everything. So I think it's more administratively that it changed, not so much infrastructure. But I'm not a public safety building person. But I think that's where we landed.
I agree. There's the administration. And then there's how... There's functions. There's the administration of the functions and there's housing of the functions. We can change... We can maybe get, you know, regionalize the administration, but we can't regionalize the house.
But certain things... They themselves brought it up.
Right, it was Jerry Lerman and Christine, I think, that came.
I totally agree with Nathan's comment, like, we shouldn't jump ahead. Like, we got a process, we get a TA, we do our planning, which we also should start talking about when we're going to do that. So that's a summertime activity. I mean, this is going to take a while. Both things are going to take a while. So I think it's fine to wait. But on the comment about the infrastructure, there are in the range of possibilities, fix what you got, just fix up what you got, whatever that means. Build two new buildings or build one combined building, right? I mean, there's a pretty wide range of things, infrastructurally, regardless of how the thing, to Nathan's point, what the organization is. But I would say the requirements of a precinct where the jail and the motor pool and a whole bunch of things are actually centrally located in another town and all you really have are, you know, officers on duty and some other things that you need to be right here for, is a different footprint, I think, you know. So maybe that's why they were bringing it up. So I think the guidance is like, "We hear you. You know, we are interested in regionalization and we're going to... We're likely..." I don't want to speak for our goal setting, but it's likely that that will be a goal for us. And we want to engage the new TA and that expertise. And once we do that, if we do that, we will, yes, you know... Well, again, likely create some kind of committee, commission, task force, whatever. And maybe outside consultants, some group of people to take a serious evaluation. Bear that in mind as you are processing your...
Yeah.
You can't give more guidance than that.
I think that's a key point, which is to have them looking at options. And the options include some of the things that you're describing.
So I'm just thinking off the top of my head right here, which is always very, very dangerous. But one thing we could do is we're having a fall town meeting. We could ask town meeting, "Should we be looking into the regionalization of fire and police?" And because otherwise, we could spend a lot of money at consultants. We could... I just think it's... I could be wrong. I think it's a very steep hill to climb to regionalize those two.
Well, we wouldn't do... Is there any really... I haven't heard an impetus to regionalize fire.
No, but I'm just bringing up what we had talked about last time.
Right.
We talked about evaluating all these different things for regionalization, not just fire.
I think, I mean, I guess if you start with that question, you'll probably get a resounding no and then you won't do anything. So you yourself proposed, and I agree with this completely, that one of the things is not even regionalization, is rationalization. Just be smarter about how you allocate town gown resources. So we should be doing that. And then separately, there are... There might be some low-hanging fruits, like communications is possibly one. But there may be some other things, or it's not even necessarily departments, but rather functions, like payroll. I don't know. That a process with an expert could guide us in ways we could be more classified.
Right, and that's why I was focusing it just on the public safety, because that's where the pressure is right now.
Right.
Right, is coming up with that. And we just built a whole communications tower systeming down here. We need that anyway, right? Because you still can't reach people in various... Yeah, just send it on a...
And again, that really is independent of the regionalization, because you would need... You need those towers regardless of who manages them.
Right.
And...
Just have to move the head.
Yeah.
I think we can do this through, you know, our process of goal-setting and then come up. And I know you're trying to move this forward because you're responding to certain, you know, situations on the ground coming up. But I think there's probably going to be enough time and then enough, you know, if we focus our energy on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. But I like to keep in mind Nathan's idea of possibly talking to town meeting and taking, you know, this sense.
Yeah, right, testing the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And but we have... That would have to be very carefully crafted as to what the question actually was. And I think we need a lot more information before we ask it, especially about, in fact, the police and fire department costs for the various...
The services?
Not for the services, but for the options, the structure options.
Yeah.
Understanding that we need to understand how much those numbers may change if we were to regionalize.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Because we wouldn't want to go in there and say, "Hey, it's forty million dollars," or do you want to regionalize? Because that's not fair.
No, yeah, right, exactly. Yeah, that's what I was trying to say.
And don't quote me on forty million dollars. That was just a number they made up.
I think, yeah, Mary Lynn is on the Zoom, so Mary Lynn. No quoting, Nathan Brown.
Yeah. Yeah, it takes a life of its own.
Biden.
Right.
Yeah. The staff jumps in. We're cleaning up this...
Right, right, okay. All right.
That's reasonable, but there's also, you know, we could challenge that committee to say, "Look, you know, one of the ways you need to..." We recommend one of the ways that you analyze this is to consider how the footprint might change if...
Right.
Those two functions, either one or both of those functions was essentially a precinct of a central.
Right.
What does go out?
Right, and yes.
And is it significant? It might be insignificant. I mean, I said the jail, what's that, one cell, right?
Yeah.
The motor pool is like a parking lot. So it may, in fact, it may not take them that long to come up with the conclusion that the footprint of a precinct and the footprint of a standalone department is like two thousand square feet. It's like in the noise of the construction.
So what I'm thinking is, and Nathan, since you're the liaison, I'm wondering if you'd be comfortable doing this, which is just have a follow-up conversation with Jerry and Christine about just what our process is that we're discussing and then...
Right. Because I do think, yeah. Because I do think, and this was my point last time about the dispatch, is sometimes you regionalize and then you pull the regionalization back. So would we want to build a building that wouldn't allow us to pull it back and therefore we're stuck in it all times? Or would we want to build a building that gave us that flexibility? I think we want flexibility. A fair point.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, that'd be great then. Good. Thank you all and thanks, Nathan. All right, well, so let's um move ahead to then looking at the fall town meeting. So um uh, and if you had a chance to look through some of the responses, you know, we heard back from Wayne and I heard back from Peggy. And what's in your packet is we had put out the idea after Wayne and Peggy's initial feedback. Good night, all.
Good night, thank you.
Um, that either Monday, October seventeenth or Monday, October twenty fourth, and then Peggy wrote back about her concern about um the um early voting for the um national election in November, as well as the primary potentially. And so I had a conversation with her yesterday. Um, and she agreed that that October seventh was was doable for her. October seventeenth, did I say seventh? Sorry, seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
I did get up kind of early this morning, sorry. Um, yeah, October seventeenth was doable. It her, she said there, you know, there's some chatter about things changing around early voting, but she thought that the earliest she'd be required to be doing it would be the previous Saturday. So it wouldn't have, you know, wouldn't have been going on for that long and there's much tallying to do. And so anyway, she was amenable to the seventeenth, which is also was fine with Wayne. So that is what I would propose. We agree on tonight. Um, and if something comes up that requires us to change that, we have some time, but I would like to um have us move um and agree that that's going to be the date that we're currently planning on.
Yeah, I put it in for seven P M.
Yes.
We'd like to be seven.
Yes, I would too. And I think our review with um Wayne, you know, made it. I think that was a
Yeah.
uh, the sense of the group, yeah. So um.
It's in my calendar.
Yeah, can I, this is something we should um make a motion? Okay. So who'd like to do that?
I move we set the date of fall town meeting for Monday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Seven, seven P M.
At seven P M.
Yeah.
I second that motion.
Awesome. All right, any more discussion? All right, well, then we're good to go with that. Great.
We need to vote.
We need to vote.
Yeah, that that would be helpful. Um, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries unanimously. Alrighty, um. So now we're getting the town administrator's report, which has a lot in it. Um, some of which requires votes from us and some uh do not. So I believe we tried to organize this, so the first part of it was more informational. So if you.
No, the first one's.
Oh, actually, we do need to do a motion around the summer hours. All right. So um do we need to have any discussion about this? Or people had a chance to look at the?
Do we know what their problem was with the uh with the previous town, the town office hours?
Hours.
Problem was your problem or they just?
Well, it says, as reported at a prior meeting, I had held a department held meeting where there was some concern over the prior summer hours.
I think, was it one of them that um?
He wanted to go an hour earlier or something.
Remember, he talked about this.
Yeah, I think some of it was that it it the hours didn't make sense for everybody, and he wanted to find hours that would be more consistent across all departments.
Okay, that was, oh, right. All right, so.
So this would be making them, this is again, starting with Memorial Day through Labor Day, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty to three P M, and Friday, eight thirty to twelve thirty P M.
I move the select board establishes those hours um from effective Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
We have a second.
Second.
Any more discussions?
Yeah, so.
I just, one, can you explain again why this was to consult, who who recommended? I'm sorry, I guess I didn't pay attention.
In the past, yeah, in the past, excuse me, the um town administrator has typically come to the board and recommended summer hours. We've always had a a change in the hour.
Okay, so we've always done it.
And it's and it's it's mostly because people leave Friday afternoon, I mean, town residents leave.
Right, so there's not.
Business here and um.
But it doesn't mean people don't work.
It doesn't mean, yeah.
Friday, right? They just don't have, it's not open to the public.
It's just not open to the public, right.
So that's not necessarily clear. We know that from historic folklore. That just means the hours are open, right?
The town hall hours, yeah.
Right, yeah. It says the following town hall hours, right, right.
And staff works whatever they're.
And hired. And just recently, we had an issue where one department did not have the same town hall hours as the rest of the departments in the town hall, which kind of created a little ruhaha, so.
They're still doing that.
Uh, no, I believe there that this is now consensus of all the town hall departments. So I'm assuming.
You know, I don't, I I actually wouldn't make that assumption. I think that was a consensus that the town hall should be open those days. I think there's still an issue that's cer- that certain department decided.
You don't have.
And they have reason and they're very passionate about it, that, you know, hey, we just, we're only going to take public, you know, in these days, and these other days we catch up on our work.
Well, in this, in this motion, we're setting the town hall hours to these hours.
Right, yeah.
This is what they have to.
Right.
This is not about the employee work schedule.
I guess I was inferring from this that everybody.
I wouldn't make that influence. I think we can't do that anyway. That's.
All right.
All right.
Right. So this is just the town hall hours, not the employee work.
If you want to, if you need to come in and register your dog, you need to know that, and you want to come in at one o'clock on a Friday, it's not gonna happen.
Be able to do it.
Right.
Right, yeah.
You know, other things also always anyway, depending on if the person's in. I mean, you might come from something and the assessor's out assessing or something, so.
And some departments do allow you to call a, to call ahead and make an appointment outside of these hours, because they are here.
Right, yeah.
Alrighty, so there's a motion on the, yes, and it's been seconded. So unless there's any more discussion, we'll do a voice vote, please. All those in favor of these summer hours, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the motion carries unanimously. Um, the next one is just for information about the um hazardous waste uh day, which we set for September seventeenth at the D P W site. The next one about the ceiling of weights and measures. So Steve has had reported us before that, you know, we, because of our population size, we now have to find our own way of getting the, and they're really just two scales.
Right here.
Yeah, there you go. So there are just two scales in town, which I think are both at ferns. So he's in discussion with Acton about it, but it hasn't been finalized. Um, the town clock prepares. This is again, this information about um five thousand dollars being transferred to allow the town clock to be um have some major work done on it.
This is.
And the FinCom approved the request on May ninth.
This is not the first five thousand we've spent on this clock. It's not on the clock itself, but we had to fix the cradle.
The whole cradle.
The cradle and stuff, so, yeah, so.
We spent a lot of money on that.
Yeah, we have been spending money on this for a while.
Yeah.
All C P C so far. I don't know why this isn't.
Oh, what?
C P C, it was all.
It wasn't allowed, yeah, this is because they did. Yeah. Um.
Did they ask the C P C for money?
I asked Steve about this and he said it didn't qualify. Now, I don't, I didn't go into any detail.
Believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then um the old playground equipment, uh, he's just put it out to auction on the municipal site to see if we can get somebody to come uh take it and pay us for that privilege.
I'd be amazed if anybody did, but okay.
And then, um, so this one we do need to vote on, which is a one day wine and malt license for the C O A for a function they want to hold on June twenty-first. And there is more information in the packet if um if you wanted to see more. Um.
I move the select board grant a one day wine and malt beverage beverages license pursuant to M G L chapter one thirty-eight, section fourteen to the Carlisle Council on Aging for an event to be held at sixty-six Westford Street, Carlisle, Mass. on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, from five P M to seven P M. Now, subject to the applicant providing host liquor liability insurance certificate. And I noticed that it was already signed off by the police chief. Yes, as we uh we used to sometimes do it also contingent on that. And at a certain point, we said, no, we wanted it done. Police chief, sign off before we.
All right, so you've made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm just explaining for, and the other thing, Travis, on these liquor licenses is that it's always um subject to the liability insurance, because the liability insurance needs the liquor license to have been given to by us before they can do it. So that's why it's it's in that order.
That's the order.
Yeah, I mean, they can't get the liquor license before, I mean, they can't get the insurance before we give the liquor license. So that's why it's always contingent on that.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, uh, if there's no more discussion, let's take a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, this carries. Then the um aerial uh mosquito control, aerial spraying, opt out mosquito control. So the Board of Health is recommending that we not opt out of the state aerial spraying for this year, which we have done in the past. We've opted out.
Used last year's plan. I mean, what's the big?
So I, is there, I believe, isn't there something in the packet? I apologize, I didn't look carefully at the second version, but there was something from Linda um Fantasia, the health agent.
I don't remember saying.
Did you get anything more? Um, let's see.
She just, there's a thing in the packet.
Yeah, there was a memo. It's just a very.
Doesn't say anything.
No, it's a very short memo.
I honestly don't see.
Have we sprayed in the past that way or we?
No, we've not sprayed. We've always opted out.
Yeah.
This makes me super nervous.
Sorry?
This makes me ser- super nervous. You know, it's like, I think people are going to care.
They are going to care.
I think they are going to care.
I would, I'd think, um, when is Board of Health's next meeting? I should know that.
Um, but didn't we, um, I don't, I thought we does does your packet, and I don't, mine does not. I don't know, maybe Jen, would you, hey, Jen, let me ask you if you don't mind, um. Do I recall this correctly that you, that Linda had sent a f- a further explanation about this mosquito control opt out?
She did, yeah. Um, I was actually trying to find it while you guys were talking, um.
And did that get, I I thought that got sent out with the the second version of the packet.
I thought it did too, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, it, this, he actually says the Board of Health does recommend that the select board consider looking into a plan for next year. Um. Um. What does that mean?
Yeah, but and it get approved. So the issue, it has to be approved by E E A by
second of May, which is already kind of passed. Yeah, so this whole thing, we should have been, let me put it to you this way.
Come up with our own mosquito control management, that would have had to have been, but I think we can still opt out. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you know what? Let's um table.
Yeah, I I I know a memo did come in late Friday. I thought I had included it. Let me. I don't see it in mine, yeah.
Let me, let let me take um.
You want to follow up on this with the Board of Health?
A bunch of things I have.
Okay.
I just worry, this has been something we've done every year. We've done our, it it I just to suddenly just say it's a massive change, and I am certain that there are people in town who would be upset if we were to just say, okay, let's just.
Nilly nilly changes, yeah, and I'm not sure.
If we have to look into a mosquito control thing, we need to have a little more lead time. Uh, yeah, when when did they know about this, you know?
Why would we do it? We've never done it in the past.
Well, it seems to, I'm trying to remember, but.
Do you have to do one or the other? You either have to have an approved plan or you have to spray.
Opt out. No, no, you, oh.
No, no, the other way. There's, they're, they seem to be inferring.
Right, that you have to have a plan.
You either have to have a plan or we're gonna spray you.
Yeah.
That's your choice.
And I don't recall that being the case.
No, I don't either.
I, no, I do recall that there have been other years where we have said we are opting out because we have this, you know, we've subscribed to this other plan or whatever, or and and and. And in fact, didn't they come to us? They wanted, because there was a question, did we join this mosquito thing? And that was going to cost money, and then they were going to spray and we didn't have a choice. So I I've forgotten, unfortunately, all the details.
Trying to open it from Jen here.
I don't understand why this is.
Yeah.
So let's, okay, um, let's table this, um.
Get more information.
Yeah, get more information. We can revisit it.
Let's just read what Jen sent.
Okay.
From the Board of Health dated May twentieth. At a public meeting held on May sixteenth, the Board of Health discussed whether the town of Carlisle should apply to opt out of aerial or other mosquito control spraying conducted by the State Reclamation Mosquito Control Board. Aerial spraying would only be done if the Mass Department of Public Health issues a certificate of public health hazard due to an elevated arbo virus risks such as E E. The deadline to apply is May twenty-seventh. That means apply. Where's that?
By Friday, right?
Yeah.
Apply to opt out. Because of the short timeframe and not being a member of this mosquito, of a mosquito controlled district, the board does not recommend that Carlisle apply to opt out, so.
Okay, so they would only only spray if there's like if there's a triple E.
Goes on. The reasons are as follows. To opt out, a municipality must first have an alternative, alternative mosquito management plan approved by the executive officer. This plan must include a historical review of triple E risks of the community in preparation of an alternative mosquito management plan that includes a minimum of three educational and outreach activities. Maybe that's something new. Since, she means because most of Middlesex County is classified by the state as high risk for triple E, the plan must demonstrate that Carlisle can perform significant mosquito control measures and interventions similar to those of the S R M C V, which is the State Reclamation of Mosquito Control Board, such as adult side application, adult aside, excuse me, applications both aerial and ground. Carlisle is not a member of the mosquito control district, so the above interventions would be difficult to conduct.
Okay.
The board does recommend, the board does recommend that the town consider preparing for next year by exploring. So I think what she's saying is, we need to buy ourselves a year. Don't opt out, because that'll create a whole bunch of havoc. You know, when we, as the minute we opt out, they're gonna be, where's your plan? What are you doing? We're like, ah, we don't have ready. So just be quiet and hope it goes away. That's what I.
And then and that it'll, it only happens if the, the spraying only happens if the state determines that there's a high risk.
But they could, because we're in a county that has high risk.
Right, right.
Although, aren't we kind of late into the, you know, I haven't heard a lot of triple E stuff.
Oh, that, no, triple E is later. No, no, no.
It's usually in the summer, yes, later.
Price is coming right now.
Yeah.
It's coming, okay.
Yeah, um, okay.
So that's probably the answer, but I'll I'll get clarification. So the question is, do we have to take action?
No, but we have to put it on our to do list because we need to get a a plan for next year.
No, that, I get, but do we have to, this deadline is like twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh, it wasn't five two, yeah, it says five two.
Oh, to apply. So that she's saying she recommends we don't apply.
Right.
Time to apply.
So we don't apply. We just be quiet. So she's saying, don't opt out, which means you don't have to do anything.
So, right, right.
That's the best.
But at the end of that, David, didn't, did they, did they say the select board? I I thought what you just read, that that it recommends that the board.
Yeah, she means her own board. She means her board, right.
No, no, it says, and I will read it again here.
Oh, no, it's to the select board. Actually, I take it back.
Recommends that the select board considers looking into a plan for next year, because it, it will cost us money undoubtedly.
Yeah.
Because we opted out of that region and all this other stuff. And that, I bet you that region has a plan.
Right.
Why not come in the Board of Health with you?
Yet to be developed calendar of, we gotta get them in there early, early, because
Exactly.
I mean, I got this question here, like, when do we go back to this?
So I think, David, when you're talking to them, ask them why they would not develop the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But I was saying to Barney, you know, we haven't yet developed our calendar for the coming year of when we're gonna have boards in, but I think they gotta be like one of the first ones we talk to.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in the same way that we've been in, you know, the last year trying to get this in boards, just for general update and sort of goal sharing. Yeah.
All right.
All right, then we are.
Missed the most exciting P A reporting.
No kidding, no kidding. I know, and you know, he was trying to get out the door on Monday and Tuesday, you know, get everything wrapped up and all this new stuff was popping up.
Yeah.
All right, so we are not going to take any action.
Somebody half as good as him for our next one.
Yeah, me too. Um, all right, we're not taking action on this item, but David is gonna follow up with the Board of Health.
Recommendation to establish a Beaver Management Committee.
Now.
Oh, committee?
Can't they, can't they create a subcommittee on their own?
Well, I bet you you need comms com, Board of Health, you know, uh, but we should, again, um, I wouldn't do anything about this until we see them and find out what the heck, why, what is.
You're talking about the Beaver Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, is it, is there not another, um, there's not a proposal in our packet about that?
No.
Okay. Um, because Jen, again, did, because I know Linda had promised that she was gonna provide um, a a draft charge.
It was supposed to come from Kathy Gallagher, but I I kept checking the email all day Friday. It didn't come in.
Didn't get anything, okay. So I think we we also table this.
Yeah.
We need more information about this.
I'm I'm wondering if it, you know, like, uh, the Beaver, they put the Beaver Deceiver, you know, uh, on there and a couple of houses, the the water had gotten up so high that it was backing up their their septic into their well. So I'm I'm wondering if that's what this is all about. But uh, this has to be a multi, you know, I think, okay, let's find out more.
Let's wait and we'll we'll put this on for the uh June. Yeah, let's wait, and we'll, we'll put this on for the, uh, June fourteenth meeting.
Yeah.
And give Steve a chance to.
I have the feeling we're gonna have a bunch of new committees, and we should get rid of some of our old ones.
Yeah.
There's a lot of that.
All right, so let's move on to the, um, next item though, which is the, um, I believe the Wilson Chapel is next, right? On his report?
No, uh, Sustainability Grant.
It's just informational.
Uh, right, about the coordinator, right, they're gonna extend the deadline for applications.
All right.
To, because they were hoping to get some stronger candidates. All righty, um, and then is the, uh, sorry, my, I think I'm looking at an old version, is the, is the, uh, Wilson Chapel being opened during Memorial Day next?
Where is the Wilson Chapel?
Um, in the cemetery, yeah.
Yeah, nice building right in the middle.
I move the Select Board approve the request of the Historical Society to open the Wilson Chapel to pub- to the public on May twenty-ninth from noon to three, and on May thirtieth from eight to noon.
Second.
All right, it's been, mo- motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, let's go with a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
I move, we approve the recommendation of the, uh, interim town administrator to remove, uh, the Salvation Army bins from the transfer station.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's a great idea.
The Transfer Station Acting Committee is the one that have worked through this, and the DPW is, is fully in support. So if there's no further discussion, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Then we have the Tour de Cure, um, and this one, there's a lot of information.
Yeah, I have to say, I was impressed by the amount of planning that went into this one.
It's not every year, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so we don't have a motion in front of us, but this was informational, because, or do we, did we have a specific motion? I don't believe so, because, um, I think part of it says they're gonna get back in touch with the chief.
Closer to the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think, um.
Shall we approve this in concept, pending further discussion with the police chief?
Sure.
Um.
They're asking for permission, so I, I move that the Select Board approve the, um, request of the Tour de Cure, uh, icicle.
Yeah.
Um, tour through Carlisle as outlined in, uh, tonight's packet.
Yeah.
On.
The date is, yeah, August twenty-first.
On Sunday, August twenty-first.
Twenty-twenty-two, okay, second.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
All right, if there's no discussion, I'll go with a, uh, roll, uh, voice vote, please, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this, that carries unanimously. Okay, um, is that it, on the, on the, uh?
We have the meetings, upcoming meetings.
Um, right, oh yeah, so let's look at the draft agenda for June, uh,
fourteenth. Uh, on number four, can we expand that, um, code of conduct to, for volunteer board members to, I, I actually sat today and wrote myself a list of things about committees and recruiting and, uh, leadership and, and, and supporting committees, because one of our goals was to better support committees, and I, so I've been thinking about it, and what I'd like to see us think of, so I'd like to kind of roll all that in, um, to this conversation if possible.
Yeah. Um, and on this, so we're looking at the draft agenda for the fourteenth, and that's item number four.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it'd be helpful, and, um, Kate, I'd be happy to work with you on this, because this is something I've thought about too, but I think it'd be helpful if we had some kind of a draft, you know, before we get into the conversation.
For the code of conduct?
Yeah, and, and I don't know if there.
Actually, last year I already gave one, I produced one last year.
Produced it again.
Let's pull it up and see if it's, um.
Did we follow it?
I'm not sure it went anywhere.
We, we should be giving it out.
Kate, I think you produced it with the goals discussion. Yeah, I think I did too. Um, I copied it, I'm, I'm, you know, no use, um, yeah.
Reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, let's take another, let's take a look at that, I do know that one of the questions, um, and this may be something that, um, Town Council needs to advise us on, but, um, it's been raised, uh, and, and, uh, we had some discussion about this last fall, which is the, um, what happens if a board member, uh, a member of a board that we've appointed i- is not following the code of conduct? And I don't think we have anything clear about what the consequences are.
Yeah.
Um, and, right.
You're talking about non-elected boards.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, where we've appointed the volunteers, or, and then that group has elected a chair, and, you know, if that's not working out, um, yeah. How you handle that, so.
Not just board members, right, it's committees.
Yeah, it's every, right, all the volunteer boards and committees.
Yeah, but I think also some of this, some of the behaviors that I've been hearing, some, some of it's because there's not enough support for these committees, and they are just straight out and working very hard, and they, uh, they take it out on one another after a while, so that's why I wanted to talk, to have a broader conversation about the kind of support that there's, some of these committees, and, staff, financial, uh.
What can they expect as resources?
What can they expect as resources?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of it. Getting right back to, should we have a Beaver Committee, right?
Exactly.
It's like, we, we create committees, and then we give them no guidance.
Yes, I, I, exactly.
And we, and we, we, right, and, and also, we, new members are, come in, and I don't know what kind of guidance they get, I don't know what kind of training they get.
And are they getting, all getting the same orientation?
I mean, I think there's been, not, maybe not quite zero, but very small number where there's like non-compliance, or.
So I had.
It's not that, it's like, okay, this is like, one of the things, for example, sorry, is, is social media conduct, right? So I notice.
Yeah.
When some people who are on boards, and some of those people should actually know better, weigh in on social media sites, and they should just be instructed that once you become an official, you're an official extension of the government, you gotta not do that, you know, that's just guidance.
So I had a, you know, I said, well, maybe every year we should have a freshman class, you know, the freshman class on, you know.
Right, a good orientation.
Orientation, right. And, you know, when, when you're being sworn in, uh, Peggy says, "All right, such and such a night, freshman class, you gotta be there."
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've thought that would be a really good idea, um, and you might also want to do that for people that become the chair of a board. Right, some, some introductory, it's all, you know.
Definitely, yeah, there definitely should be guidance for chairs, and.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And I don't know, is there a handbook, I know that we have one, right, and, and we did one at school committee, we create a handbook for new members.
Yeah, it's open meeting law handbook, I think that's handed out.
Anyway, yeah.
Could I just, a couple comments? The agenda?
Is it on this, or?
On the agenda. But, but is it off of the?
This is number four, which is what Kate was bringing up to expand, so let me just, um, Kate, it sounds like we're talking about two different, not, two things that are related, but different, which is.
Well, I, you won't. It is and it isn't, because.
Okay, but if we want to fold that all into this conversation.
It's more orientation, not code of conduct.
Yeah, I would say orientation for volunteer boards.
That's a big lift, I don't know if we, we're gonna be A-ready and B, it's definitely not.
I think we should discuss what things we want to.
Yeah, okay, but you're saying you think we need more than twenty minutes.
Uh.
Said you want to expand it, so.
Well, okay.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, um.
If we all come prepared, now that we've, we've kind of had this little discussion, if we each come prepared with items.
That we think are necessary.
That we think should be on there, and then we can task somebody, Kate, uh, you know, to come up, and then we go to work, right? Then we have to go to work and actually pull some materials and stuff.
Um, okay, was it, so that's item number four, that we're going to, um, twenty, let's see if we can, when David and I go through this with, um, Jen and, uh, Steve, we'll see if we can give it a little more time. Okay, uh, Nathan, you had another, uh, thing about the agenda?
Kind of directly related to what you just said, I don't, I, I always worry about having too much time for things, it's always better to go over than have to wait. I think forty minutes for annual, uh, appointments is way too much, and only twenty minutes potentially for the, for preparing for the interviews might be a little too little.
Yeah.
But, but it might be okay, twenty minutes, and you put the other thing.
Right.
But then the other comment I wanted to make is, um, I think before we get too far out of this last, you know, year, because our year isn't the fiscal year, right, our year is the election year.
Right.
I think we should get on our agenda as quickly as possible, a review of last year's goals, and coming up with this year's goals. I think that should be a super high priority, but.
Yeah, I agree with that, but typically, at least in the recent past that I've been involved in, we, we, we set, set a whole summer session simply to do that, right?
Uh, we did for future goals, but not for.
Yeah, the review we did as part.
Review of the goals, I think we want to do it as soon at the end of the year as possible, so that everybody.
Sessions with Mark Way.
I would suggest we, we get a copy of those goals, if we don't all have them, and, and we self-assess ourselves, and we come back here, and we say, this is our self-assessment, but we've all done our own self-assessment of those goals.
Okay.
That would help us with that next.
Yeah, well, that's.
I've never, I, I, did we, I guess we did last year have the off-site, I think that was the second year of that.
Yeah, right.
I don't think I have a copy of them, so you can make sure I get a copy.
Oh, yeah.
Could be, actually, can, a meeting can be anywhere in town, is that the rule or not?
Yeah, it could be even out of town, it just has to be posted, oh yeah.
Really, it can be out of town?
Well, at least the, the reference that I was given by, um, Tim Holt was that they had, I've forgotten where they went.
They used to, but I don't know.
See, I don't think you can do that anymore.
Because you can't, yeah, well, then.
No, in fact, um, I believe I, I.
I think it has to be in a public building, I don't even think it could be somewhere else.
We could, we could do it like at the, um, the Concord, well, no, I know, but the Concord Municipal, the Light, um.
Municipal Light Building?
Building has a, a really nice conference room.
Well, you know what else, the church at St. Irene's, which we use for the screening interviews? Have you guys been down in that facility? The, the downtown, they call it the basement, but it's a beautifully, you know, done basement that has, you know, probably eight little separate meeting rooms and a nice little library with a table, and anyway, we can, we can worry about that when we get to it, but let's, but let's do the review of, of our current goals, um.
Okay.
At, at a June meeting, and I think we can do it on the fourteenth, and then we can also then identify whether we're gonna have the development of our goals going forward, that we'll do it a regular Select Board meeting, or whether we're gonna create some kind of separate goal-setting session. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, anything else on this, um, agenda?
Just for preparation for the annual appointments, I'm just wanna alert everybody that I, my appointment to the MFC and to the Housing Trust, both of those are up, um, at the end of June, June, as, as the Select Board representative to those committees.
Right.
Um, this is, and next year will be my last year, my term, and I have not decided whether. But I just, I'm just.
Well, that's kind of why there's forty minutes, right, because there's gonna be all this.
I, okay, but I, I just want to alert people so that they can start thinking before then, so that. I'm, yeah.
Yeah, now remember, we've got two separate things on here, if you look at number three, that's the Select Board Liaison Assignments. Now, we don't have the timing right on this, because we've only done, so we'll, we'll redo the timing, but that's the discussion that we all have about our assignments to be liaisons to various boards and committees.
But she's appointed.
But, but a couple of those liaison assignments.
Right.
Are not assigned to anybody else, because I'm.
They, they should be, well, we'll pick it up, they should be all.
So, we'll, we'll redo the timing on these, but, um, just to go back to the liaison assignments though, so we've all gotten the list, there may be a couple of additions, right, because of committees that are probably gonna be.
Master Plan Implementation Committee, and the.
If we go that route, right, yeah. Right, um, so, so we'll adjust that, but they're gonna be two separate things, and in the meantime, um, and Travis, maybe you recall this from the, being on the ZBA, but, um, typically, Jen sends out something to all the existing members of committees and boards that are, whose appointments are due to expire or end, you know, that, do they want to be reappointed, and then similarly for people that, whose terms are continuing, just to double-check that everybody's continuing, and no one's planning to resign, so we, we have that information, um, and in theory, we'll be doing a chunk of appointments that night, and a lot of times committees, we don't have all the information back, but we'll start that process of doing appointments. That.
I have two resignations on the Housing Trust.
Yeah.
So that I, that I really know that.
Okay, but that's in the.
Yeah, but I will get that to the.
Yeah, all right, so, um, any other suggestions about this agenda?
No.
All right, but of course, I'll.
Before we go off Town Administrator's Report.
Sure.
Never mind, it's in consent agenda, I want to make sure we didn't miss this, that it's in consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, um, all right, does anyone here have a report they want to give as a liaison?
There's a little, sorry, there's this other upcoming, so I want clarification.
What are, what are you pointing to?
Right below your, right where you are, at the bottom of your screen.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 about the Select Board meetings, yes, thank you, I'm glad you pointed that out.
We're all invited, we're all invited for Thursday, the second, right, to listen to the auditor.
Yeah, so this is a follow-up, right, we had the conversation, um, you know, here at the Select Board meeting, maybe a couple of meetings ago, and then agreed for a follow-up, more in-depth discussion, which Kim has set up.
But we need that report.
Yes, and didn't.
Before, it's a big report.
I thought she said it, she just sent it, didn't she?
She just sent it?
I think I remember.
I thought she had sent it too.
I just didn't open it yet.
She should send it in paper format, maybe my bad then.
She should send it in paper format, yes.
Yeah.
Right, remember, because you can't, you can't read it, uh.
That's right.
So.
I do want to point out that there were things in that report that I think were in error, I will not be able to be there, I'm not gonna be in the country.
Oh.
Um, but there, I, I think I sent it to many of you, um, some of the things we have fixed since then, but there are things in that report that are just inaccurate, we, we did.
You can resend that.
We, we did have a password policy that met that, and they did give the evidence, we did have, uh.
So corrected.
A penetration test, and they did, they were given that, um, those are the two things that we did have, and then there's other things that we have implemented since. I've sent it to Kim, I've sent it to Kelly, um, and I think I sent it to you, or I sent it to, I didn't want to send it to the whole board, because that would be a violation of open meeting law.
Well, it's not, because it's just giving information.
But, um, so I, I just wanted to, so just want to make sure, I can summarize it and send it to all of you.
Would you please?
But there were things in there that I, I feel were inaccurate.
So they corrected some of them, but not all of them?
I have heard nothing, I've not been in direct connection with Cliff and Larson, I've only been.
Barney, you, you're gonna be communicating with Kim to get.
Yeah, in the absence of Steve being in town, yeah, I'll follow up with Kim. Um.
It'd just be nice to pull him out if we could.
Yeah.
It should be, no, it shouldn't be.
So, um, and Nathan, you, you've sent to Kim the, the things that have been done.
Kelly, right?
I saw, I think I saw something from you, Nathan, at one point, yeah.
Yeah, and I also, I did the SAE audits.
Get a paper copy of the, uh.
I did, I did the, I did the SAE audits, um, that was after the report, it would be still draft, but I did do those for two of the um, applications that we use, I think they're the two biggest ones, but I never got the one for the other one.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll locate that, actually, you know what, would you mind just sending the memo to Jen, and then?
Yep.
Yeah, that'll be good, and then we can, we can get that for whomever needs to have it, um.
Then the second line item.
Okay, but hang on, I want to go back though to June second for a second, because, uh, the idea would be that then the board approves the final, um, audit, the idea would be that then the board approves the final um, audit, and that Kim was, if there, as long as there are three members of the board there on the second, this has actually been posted as a, as a meeting.
I've, I've got it on my calendar.
Yeah.
I was planning to be there, too.
Okay, so that's, all right, because um, I am not able to be there either.
Oh.
All right, so Nathan and I.
Can be here by ten.
Okay, all right, so that works. Um, great, and then this.
David's chair, you're chairing. You're, you'll be chair then.
Okay, I'll chair. Thank you for your money.
Yeah.
Wrong with power.
Okay.
Um, okay, so.
And the date of the administrator interview, so we talked about this a little bit, David, before you came, so the what had come out of the um, the poll that Jen did, uh, and that we clarified with Travis, so Thursday, June twenty-third.
Thursday, June twenty-third.
All right, and we're going from five to ten P M. And I can give you a brief update.
Yes.
Which is that the screening committee completed its work. Um, they selected three well-qualified finalists. Um, and those three finalists have been notified that they're a finalist, and the others that um, were not chosen have been notified, and the search firm is now doing uh, reference checks and background checks, and they will provide to the Select Board a report, uh, you know, electronic version of their report on those three finalists. And until the Select Board receives that report, there's, none of this information will be made public. Uh, so the screening committee is not it, authorized, they're not allowed to discuss this with anybody, and so um, I'm waiting, I'm talking with John Petron, the, the consultant that we're using, about when he thinks that report will be ready, and then how we'll release it, because it doesn't have to be done at a Select Board meeting. It could be something that just goes to the Select Board via email, and at that point, um, that um, begins, that then becomes a public document, and um, then it will, it is our discretion about when we make that public, but clearly, you know, when we set the date for this and and post it, we'll be indicating the three finalists, who they are.
By the fourteen P M.
Um, I think we will have it by the fourteen. In fact, actually, I'm sure we'll have it by the fourteen.
We probably wouldn't post this until the Friday before the twenty-third.
Correct, correct, right.
It won't be public until.
And if, well, and it, and question is, if 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 we on the fourteenth of June, we could receive it then, actually, at our Select Board meeting on the fourteenth, and then it does become public. Um, and so.
And will that report also include their TVs and their?
Yeah, the whole works.
The whole works, okay.
Yep.
I, I have one question, I don't know if you can answer it, but did you pick three um, finalists because um, you felt you needed to pick three finalists, or were, did you pick three finalists because they were the ones that rose the top? Um, and you, or did you look at, you know, think about doing a fourth one, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to gauge, you know?
Yeah, um, I can say that it was a very strong pool of candidates, and that we um, narrowed it, narrowed the original pool down to a group to do actual face-to-face interviews with, and out of that group, um, it was, it was very difficult to arrive at just three. So, but the strong advice from the consultant was that that's, that's an appropriate number, and I, I, I guess I can, and then, and that if we were to choose more, you run the risk of some of those candidates who, once it becomes public, you know, would need to tell their current employer.
Yeah.
That they were looking, and some of those candidates would then say, hmm, you know, my chance is one out of three is, you know, a lot better than one out of four or five, and they may choose not to stay in the mix.
Yeah, okay.
So his advice was, go, i- i- if we had the three that we felt strongly about, which we did, but so the screening, screening committee is very, you know, is uh, was, was very uh, unanimous, and.
Right. That's mostly.
My, my preference would be that we not get it in our packet for the fourteenth, because I just think it, it shouldn't be public record yet, until. I, I, I think we should get the packet when, when it's posted, you know, however many days.
Uh-huh.
That's when we get the packet. It's still private until the, till that meeting is open.
I agree.
I agree.
It just completely eliminates any possibility of anything getting out at any time.
Uh-huh.
And I don't see the benefit of putting it in the fourteen packet, because we're not gonna talk about it anyway.
Right.
Um.
Yeah.
So that would be, I think, just to eliminate any possibility of anything getting out there early.
Uh-huh. So, now, Ju- twentieth is, is Juneteenth, so we can't, um.
Monday.
The Monday, so.
For the interviews.
Maybe would be the twenty-first.
Oh, 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 I see what you're saying, but for the, what wait, no, um, yes, you're right, so if it's, needs to be posted on the twenty-third, we probably, we probably one would still try to get the packets out on Friday, right?
I would like to have it by Friday.
It's still private.
I mean, typically, we've.
Yes, all the meetings open, it's not public record.
Right, yeah, so um.
Be nice to get it the sixteen or seventeen.
Reason we couldn't get the packet out by the sixteenth, Thursday, before the weekend, because they're providing the in material, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
It's their report, so we don't, there's nothing that we have to do, they have to provide it, and John's already said, they will have it ready for us before that.
Okay, so.
Um, let's just assume that you'll get that packet, and then um.
Yeah, we don't want it too early, but on the other hand, I don't want it so late that I don't have time to sit and read it.
Really look through it, right.
It can be the day after the, that, the fourteen.
The other thing I want to say is that um, on the screening committee, we had some discussion about how could we, I asked for advice from the group and from John about how could we, as a Select Board, get something um, from the candidates that would allow us to see something more about how they might operate. Rather, you know, because a face-to-face interview, it gives you a certain window, and you can look at their background materials, but you know, there's a lot more to trying to figure out if it's a good fit or not, so we went back and forth on a number of ideas, but the one idea that seemed to both be um, manageable and and not unreasonable to ask is that each candidate would be asked to submit, along with what we already have on them, provide us with a sample of work that was not, that was fairly recent, but that was not, you know, fifty pages and was not a PowerPoint, but something short enough that we, we could have a chance to review it as part of this packet. So, that's something that we'll, we'll have, and we should, as a Select Board on the fourteenth, one of the things we want to do, and we'll have John come, is really look through, there's a whole set of questions that that he's gonna provide, which they've used, you know, in previous interviews, but where we can think about, what is it for Carl, for Carlisle that, you know, might be something very specific? He's got different categories, you'll see, and so that will get ahead of time as well. Oh, sorry, sorry, um, thank you. Uh, so I just want to give you a heads up that, that on the fourteenth, we do want to discuss, um, not just, yeah, part of that preparation is talking with John about what are the, how are the, how do the, how do we want the interviews to go, and what are some of the questions, and?
Right, because last time, when we did our interim, um.
Yes.
Um. Things, we had questions, and some of them, in fact, there's one question in particular I would like to ask again, um, so.
So we'll have a chance to go over that with John on the fourteenth.
And it would, so we'll then see the questions you guys already asked? Or not?
No, uh, no, it's a good ques- I'm not sure.
Those questions.
I'm not sure, because we, there was, there's no documentation of those interviews. There's no um.
Okay.
You know, we did it in an executive session, and there are notes from the executive session, but we don't identify any candidate by name. They're just by number, and those will not be released.
You didn't ask a standard list of questions.
We did.
So that's what I'm asking for.
You just want the list, not the responses.
No, just a list of questions.
Yes.
You didn't document it.
No. That's by, that was.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
Information if you can give us.
Yes, I, I think, you know.
Any information you have, once it's public, it ought to be released.
Um, well.
But, I mean, counsel can help.
Yeah, yeah, no, and John, the consulting firm knows what they're doing on this, yeah.
Um, okay, and I, I know this is sort of jumping the gun, because we haven't, but I'm, I'm jumping forward to the, the the contract negotiation and some of the things, when, when are we gonna discuss as a board? Um, like, the length of contract that we think we want to ask for, um, uh, one of the things I've been thinking about because of negotiations that we've been doing with the unions, and um, was thinking that maybe instead of in the contract having a set COLA, that it doesn't have, the contract not have a set COLA, but it's, they're subject to the COLA that we set every year, um, I think would have the negotiation easier in certain respects. So that, that, you know, I've been thinking about.
Yeah.
Other things that we, we, we may want to have, and I think a definite thing about um, uh, evaluation, and that I think we should really be considering hiring a consultant every year, or every two years, or whatever number of, you know, um, to help us with the evaluation of our town administrator.
Administrator.
To get a three sixty, because again, we have.
Need a consultant.
Well, I don't know if you need a consultant, but.
Plenty of best practices. You just go up to the schools.
Well, let's, but, but you're raising this as something that we.
This is things that I think we should think of in advance, that we may want to incorporate into a contract.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, from a contractual standpoint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't, I don't think we need, so does, what's the, what's the name of the, John's outfit?
John Petron, uh, the Paradigm.
Paradigm, do they give you a template of sample contracts?
Good question.
Um.
Probably have them, right?
You know, I'll ask, I don't know.
I think we should ask them to provide some sample, not one, some sample contracts. I would also ask Tom the same question.
And we're gonna need an executive session, by the way, uh, on our next.
It's in there.
You put it on the agenda, thinking you might need one.
Yeah, okay.
This is for the police contract, yeah, okay.
So I understand this board then negotiates those contracts.
Yep.
Particularly, we do the, like, these five members, or do we have counsel, or do, I mean? It's counsel, it's primary, it's, it's counsel, it's the recruiting firm that helps as well. Um, but not always, it's like with the, it's the interim town administrator, I met him for lunch, and we negotiated it over lunch.
Yeah, so it would not be the whole board that does it publicly, but more, yeah, it gets worked out by a smaller group of people.
I had a, I had a, some parameters, and I was working with him.
Sure.
Yeah.
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 And in this case, we didn't do an executive session and, and review it, because it's such a short contract, but.
Yeah.
And in the next one, where it's a longer, uh, different relationship, there'll be an executive, uh, where we discuss this.
Well, that's a different.
Different issue, right.
Yeah.
But, yeah, likely a future Select Board meeting will have that executive session on it. Um, uh, right, so the dates, um, so that, so make sure you have that date on your calendar then for those interviews.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, and then um.
Who's buying dinner?
Well, we, Jen said she would figure out a dinner, and so we'll definitely have some food here.
Pizza.
Um, yeah, um, all right, and then our regular Select Board meeting, uh, we have the one on June fourteenth, which is this draft agenda, and then the next one is June twenty-eighth. Um, and in the meantime, so maybe at that June twenty-eighth is when we can, uh, figure out how we're gonna do goal-setting, whether we're gonna do it in a, in a, in a regular Select Board meeting, or we're gonna try to set up something special.
This should be all by itself. I think it's.
Uh-huh.
What, what I was, what I was chatting with, maybe it was you, or Barney, I can't remember, but because we, in the summer, we don't always maybe have to have the second and fourth.
Right.
Maybe we could take one of those, because, and then.
Yeah.
Regular meeting.
Right.
There'll be a month gap between two regular meetings, but if it's July.
Right.
So I think the first thing is actually, and we could do this, we could ask this tonight of Jen, is call the five of us for vacations.
For summer plans, yeah, 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 so Travis, you had asked me, you know, when you and I talk, so it, it wasn't, it's not atypical for, for instance, if August is a time when a lot of people are in and out, that we might only have one regular meeting in August, because we don't have five of us in town to, you know, for a quorum, but um, we'll see where that goes. The other thing is, remember, we're gonna be, depending on what the state does, we may be, right, we won't be, have the option to come in via Zoom anymore.
Oh, no, that'll.
You think that's gonna pass, the next extension? Well, we'll find out.
They just say they're, the MIA is just having this thing, right? They're gonna have a whole seminar now to.
Right.
Virtual means, so gee.
All right, so let's, uh, so are there any liaison reports?
I, yeah, I, well, I think maybe my thing should be.
Yeah, so what, yeah, so why don't we move to that and not have that be part of the consent agenda, Kate, your appointment?
Shouldn't not be a part of the consent agenda.
We move to that, um.
That I move that Kate Reed, uh, be appointed to the C P C, uh, Community Preservation Committee, uh, for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
For a second.
Second.
Kate, you want to give us a quick?
Well, okay, the, um.
Dylan?
Everybody thought that the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant from C P C uh, for the Benfield Leaching Field was going to be distributed by, that was going to, going to be distributed by the Housing Trust, but the town meeting vote said that the money was gonna go directly to NOAA. Um, however, there was some slip up somewhere, I don't know what happened, NOAA never got the grant document, they never signed it. Everybody was still laboring under the, the, the feeling that the trust was going to be the one that distributed it, and the trust was no way going to distribute money be, until the leaching field actually got done and was operating, and we, we were going to do it as a reimbursement, uh, and in fact, and, and the town council had said, you know, we, we should do it, he had ideas about how it should be done, and so, anyway, we were all laboring under this false idea that the trust was in control of this money. Um, and then things got to a point where um, possibly there was going to be a lawsuit, and uh, there was a big meeting in January of the, so there was town council, NOAA's council, the trust was there with their council, uh, and there was a big meeting, and um, it was verbally agreed that, and, and NOAA, as I said, was there, that the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars could be used as sort of like a bond for the work that needed to be done to finish the septic and the leaching field. And that, uh, the Board of Health would see if they could get this consulting engineer back on board, because he had quit, he was mad at NOAA, because NOAA hadn't paid his bill, um, get him back on board to do the work, and they did. And we were, you know, all ready to pay, and I started looking at the documents and realizing, wait, we have to, we have to um, revise the documents, and then we ended up with a snag with revising them.
We need all this detail.
Well, I'm just telling you why.
We're ready to approve it.
Uh, so we needed to have, well, I, I think you need to know that.
We know you're not gonna pull a fast one.
Well, I'm trying to protect the town and do everything in legal way, and this, so the C P C is authorized to sign off on this, but the Housing Trust and the Board of Health are not, and we need to get these bills paid.
Nobody's on CCP, C P C now, who can sign it?
Uh, you know, I, you know, Luke is still on it, but, no, well, no, Luke is not on it.
Not on it.
No, he's not on it, so there, I'm sure there's somebody else, but you know, who am I gonna ask?
Luke would still be on it until June thirtieth, that's when we appointed him, because he's not on the Select Board, doesn't mean he's not on that.
I think.
Yes, he is.
Like, what's appointed rep to the C P C?
He, yeah.
Appointed until June thirtieth.
I don't know, I don't know, it doesn't.
Well, anyway, this just, just seems.
Okay.
Um, to be easier, uh, I'm here, I'm, you know, know all this history, and I know what should be signed and what shouldn't be signed, and I'm trying to get it done.
All right, any questions or comments to Kate? We okay then, all right, it seems like we're ready to then do a voice vote on appointing Kate as.
I guess, actually, I do have one question.
Yeah.
Are we going over the number of people who could be on C C, C P C? Okay, so somebody has come up.
Um, well, I have to double check, well.
I just don't want to get us in trouble since you're signing something.
Let me go online.
While you're doing that, why don't I move ahead to the consent agenda, which if you look at your packet, um, what's in the consent agenda is um, the minutes. Um, and there is also the uh, uh, let me go back up here. Let's walk through it.
The track that Maureen designed.
She's on. She's on CAT, she's not on C P C.
Yeah, no, but she was the, she was the C A H T representative on C P C and she has resigned.
She said she'd stay on, but there was a quorum.
All right, so what you have in your packet is you have, um, two sets of minutes. One is the set of minutes from the, uh, very brief meeting that the select board had prior to the town meeting. And that's designated, uh, so we have the minutes from, um, Tuesday, uh, April 19th, which was, and then we have the minutes from, um, the, the, the meeting that, town hall me, the, the, um, town meeting, meeting of April 25th. So those are here. The other thing that's in the consent agenda is, um, if you look at page 40, if you kept it all consecutive, the, um, item, the first thing in item 13. So these are the warrants that I approved, that I signed, um, uh, last week with Kelly. And she's provided the sort of highlights of the different warrant articles that, that I signed off on. So if anybody had any questions about these, it's fairly clearly laid out. And then there's a whole series of appointments here, um, which I'm not going to go over everyone unless people want me to do that. And there is also, um, a resignation in here from, uh, Maureen Cosgrove-Derry resigning from the Housing Trust, but she'll serve until a replacement is found. And, uh, that is it in the consent agenda. So my question is, does anyone want to pull out any of those items to discuss them? I'll leave it there. Because if you do, then we'll pull that one out and then we'll, we'll, um, approve the rest of them as one whole consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull something out?
I would just, uh, I don't want to pull anything out, but I would, um, request that we not put in the appointments and the resignations in a consent agenda in the future. But I think it's good to celebrate that we have new people coming in and listing their names in public. And it's good to be able to say thank you to the outgoing people.
Yeah.
So I think that I wouldn't, I wouldn't lump those in as something we just want to kind of fast track through.
Okay. That's a reasonable, yeah, I, I, I can understand the reasoning for that.
So, but there, this packet wasn't on the website, so could, could, you know, I hate to do this, but can I just quickly read through who the appointments are?
Absolutely.
People online and everything would, would know.
Sure, let's do that.
Chrissy O'Shea to the Carlisle Historical Commission is an appointment. Ben Herter, uh, who is an architect to the Historical Commission. Uh, some of these may be, um, associate, I'm not going to go into that. And, oh, there's Chrissy again. Uh, Ed Rolfe, uh, is coming off Planning Board, but he's going to, uh, remain on Historical Commission, but not as the Planning Board member. He's going to be an alternate member.
You have the reappointment of Erin Delia to serve on the Finance Committee?
Uh, for the FinCom.
And then the. Yep.
Want to read them? Uh, Jason Walsh, uh, and, um, Rob Meisick, uh, as associate members of the Planning Board.
Oh, I'm sure.
Maureen, and then Maureen Cosgrove-Derry is, uh, resigning from the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you, Maureen, for your service and thank you, everybody else, for agreeing to either renew or come on.
I think I should just. And then did you mention Deb Towor and Jean Delano as the Carlisle Inspectors of Animals? That's also in here.
Did not see that, so no, I did not.
Right, so they're, yeah, being nominated to, uh, Jean would be a reappointment and Deb would be a new appointment as the Carlisle Inspector of Animals.
Yes, but she's missing it off until 2023 unless she decides not to be.
All right, um, any other, uh, items under the consent agenda that people want to discuss? Hey, you two, can you hold on one second? Thanks. Let's see if we can get this done. Did you want to pull anything out from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. All right, so let's do that and in the future, um, we will not do appointments and resignations as a part of a consent agenda so that we can acknowledge them publicly, yeah. Uh, so, uh, I would like a motion to accept the consent agenda. I think the way we have to do this is accept the consent agenda, um, and then vote to approve it. Is that correct? Do we have to do this the way they do it at a town meeting? Or we can just simply?
Do it all at once.
Do it all at once.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
I move to accept, I move that we accept a consent agenda and approve this particular consent agenda.
There's a whole motion in this thing for your consent.
Oh, yeah, where do you see that?
It says, uh, I'm going to jump pages. I move to appoint the draft meeting minutes for April 19th, 2022 and April 25th, 2022. I move to support the nomination of Deborah Towor and Jean Delano as a Carlisle Inspector of the Animals, that's where it is in here, it's in the motion. From May 1st, 2022 through May 1st, 2024. I move to appoint Ed Rolfe, 916 Maple Street in Bed Herter, 517 Bedford Road to serve on the Historical Commission as alternate members with terms to expire June 30th, 2025. Move to reappoint Erin Dela to serve on the Finance Committee with a term to expire in June 30th, 2023. Move to appoint Jason Walsh, 106 Robin Drive in Edwin Meisick, uh, 70 Orchard Acres as associate members of Carlisle Planning Board with terms to expire in June 30th, 2023. And I move to accept with regret the resignation of Maureen Cosgrove-Derry from the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust effective as soon as a replacement is found.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, um, and let's move to, uh, voice vote for approval of this consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
The reason why I did not read the warrant thing is we've never voted on that before.
Right.
It seems like.
Right.
So where did you get the advice? Because it doesn't sound like a consent agenda to me if we have to make an individual. Did Tom, did Tom tell you how to do this or?
Well, we, we, no, we, um, Steve and I and, um, Jen, yeah, I will, I'll double check about how to do this in the future.
Okay.
All right, so Kate, what did you?
Conservation Committee, uh, consists of seven members, one member each from the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Housing Authority, the Conservation Commission, the Recreation Committee and the Historical Commission, plus one member from the community.
So the question is when a member rolls off, is, and Luke has, in the case of the Select Board, do all his appointments as a Select Board rep continue? Or?
I would think that.
Not continue, I don't know that.
I would think if it's specifically, yeah, I think for the, my guess would be if it's like an appointment to a committee that's not because they're on the Planning Board, like, because there's a seat. I would think that that seat is vacant as soon as he's no longer, or they're no longer planning.
Right, it's a change to what you said earlier, right?
Right, well.
So then we could.
No, it's not, I'm, I'm saying that this is because it's actually a specific seat for the.
That's right, that's what I mean, no, that's what we're trying to get at. So, I mean, your point was valid, we can't appoint her illegally and then she signs it, so. Do we all agree that it's a legal appointment for us to appoint?
I think so, but maybe just check with Tom after we do this before you sign it.
Yeah, right, that's right, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll do.
Yeah.
So the motions.
All right, so the motion's on the floor and it's been seconded?
Yeah, I think that's, we've talked about, it's good.
All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. And I believe we have reached the end of our agenda. Did you say no? No, oh.
Naturally, you say no.
Something, all right, so I would, uh, like, sorry, I, I, because I was doing this.
Better be important.
No, well, no, it's just about the minutes, um, we passed them, but I made, uh, edits to the minutes, so I, which I don't think made, made into your packet, so I hope that the, um, the motion said as amended.
It did not, because it was part of the consent agenda.
Sorry.
The minutes were.
As I said, I was kind of checked out.
Right, so, um, are they, uh, are substantive, substantive or more?
Had Luke present when he wasn't and he had, had an absence when he wasn't.
Okay.
And, uh, then there were typos and then there was a missing table that, uh, that, you know, a sentence that was ran wrong and.
Okay.
I would move.
All those, the Luke one is important.
I want to, I want to, I want to move a revote on the minutes from tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I move that we approve the draft meeting minutes for April 19th, 2022 and April 25th, 2022 as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so.
Stay.
All right, so those minutes have been, um, approved as amended. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much.